Good evening. I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39. This is Monday, November 13th, 2017, and we are at the McHaleian Education Center. Will the clerk please call the roll? Here.
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 Thank you. Principal Sue Kick is here tonight from Harper with her Harper students who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. We have a very special treat for you tonight. We have Harper students here who have been studying Spanish all throughout their K-4 curriculum. And during their win block, What I Need, they have had this Spanish extension. So our special treat will be they're going to say the pledge first in Spanish. Mrs. Monica or Senora Monica Brown has been working with our students during their What I Need block on this extension to Spanish. So I'll have the students first introduce themselves, and then they might share something that they've enjoyed as part of the Spanish curriculum. And after we say it in Spanish, then we'll all say it together in English.
My name is Evan, and I like Spanish because it's kind of cool knowing a different language.
Hi, my name is Chloe, and in third grade, I really enjoyed doing a Spanish cooking show.
Hi, my name is Phoebe, and I also like doing the Spanish cooking show.
Hi, my name is Avery Gable.
Hi, my name is Lily.
Hi, my name is Eliza Hanen.
Hi, my name is Gracie.
Hi, my name is William.
Hi, my name is Eli.
Hello, my name is Aiden. One thing I enjoyed is Spanish was the cooking show. It was very creative.
Hello, my name is Jenna Crosswhite, and one thing I've always enjoyed about Spanish was a game called Matamoscas, where we would grab fly swatters and the teacher would call out, would call out a Spanish word, and we would have to swat the picture that it is, well, that the word means.
Hi, I'm Jack Diamond.
Yo prometo lay outside a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de America y a la República que representa una nación bajo Dios entera con libertad y justicia para todos. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Thank you all very much. Continuing our Harper theme tonight, we have some artwork from Harper Elementary School behind me. Students have been learning a variety of drawing techniques this semester. Fourth graders examined the difference between observational drawing and using their imaginations in their fancy feet shoe projects. Let's see some of those here. Third grade students looked at Vincent Van Gogh's bedroom and chair paintings as a jumping off point to design a pop-up chair and bedroom scene over there on my left. And second graders practiced persistence, creativity, and celebration of art forms from other cultures in their henna hand drawings. So those are all beautiful, and thank you to Harper students for contributing those. It's time to approve the minutes. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the October 23rd, 2017, regular and executive session meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the October 23rd, 2017, regular and executive session meetings.
Yes, may I have a second?
A second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Do board members have any comments, errors, or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Any nays? The motion is carried by general consent. The next item is public comments. Before we move to public comments, I have some procedural comments that I want to make. First, we will discuss the rest of the last committee of the whole meeting in a few minutes, but I wanted to mention that the board met and discussed how we would like our meetings to run last Thursday. We agreed that we are going to adhere to certain norms, including when we would respond to comments and be, and how we would be respectful of each other's right to speak. You may notice that I will be more directive in recognizing board members tonight. This is an effort to ensure that we have a respectful and productive meeting. I will mention again, all of our board members, and unfortunately, I have to speak for Ellen, who is not here tonight, but she asked me to do so. All of our board members agree that this is how we want our meetings to function. As regards, regards the public comment period, we discussed several changes that we want to make to our public comment period. These are listed in tonight's first read of Policy 2:230. We expect these new public comment policies will give us, give a more fair chance to all participants to speak, and we expect they will be in effect for the December board meeting. However, our standing rules are still in effect tonight. I want to remind everybody that our standing policy is that each person can speak for five minutes. Please state your name and community of residence. We will try to give you a warning when your time is nearly up. We also have a standing policy that the president can limit comments to 15 minutes per topic. Tonight, I do not intend to limit conversations on the levy to 15 minutes because of the number of people we have, and I hope not to limit it at all. With that said, we hope that commenters will be as brief as they can so that everyone can get a chance to speak. It is also our policy that commenters can speak in both of two comment periods. I would respectfully ask that commenters do not do that tonight, at least until it appears that everyone has gotten a chance to speak once. Next, I want to remind people that we are in a public meeting and among our neighbors and fellow residents. The board also discussed this past Thursday in committee, and all of us agree that it is important to emphasize that we expect appropriate conduct from everyone. On behalf of all of the members of the board, I ask you to please speak only when recognized by me. Please refrain from other extraneous, distracting behaviors like cheering or booing. With that, if any member of the public would like to make a comment, please come forward, and I will recognize you. Remember to please state your name and your community of residence.
Is this on?
Yeah. My name is Raquel Klebenoff. I'm a parent, a resident, and a taxpayer in Willmet, District 39, and I very strongly support extending the tax levy to keep pace with inflation, as has been the practice for many years. As you know, keeping the levy the same while the cost of goods and services increase would actually be a cut to our education funding. Like most residents, we chose to live in Willmet primarily because of the excellent public schools. The schools are a main people, a main reason most people move and stay here. No one's moving to Willmet for the exciting nightlife. Failing to extend the levy to keep pace with inflation could seriously jeopardize the quality of public education in District 39. Furthermore, it would send a very dangerous signal to potential homebuyers that our community no longer placed the highest priority on our schools. District 39 not only has an outstanding record in providing superior public education, but has done so while being a responsible steward of our tax dollars. It would be the height of foolishness and shortsightedness to reduce the inflation-adjusted dollars going to such an important and effective investment in our children and community. Please continue to support Willmet's excellent public schools and extend the tax levy to keep pace with inflation.
Thank you. Other comments?
Michael Lieber, 2035 Hollywood Court in Willmet, have three kids in District 39. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the Finance Committee meeting on Thursday, but just wanted to say something quickly on the record at the full meeting. Following up on those points about inflation, there are so many uncertainties that we face in District 39, given what's going on with politics in Illinois, whether our next governor is going to be Bruce Rauner again, whether it's going to be a Democrat, who knows what Mike Madigan is going to do. There's so many uncertainties with that, and there are plenty of other uncertainties like inflation. We hear that we might be in a rising inflation environment over the next few years. And to keep pace with that, to make sure that we have the bills to not only pay what things cost today, but what they're going to cost a year from now or five years from now, I think the board should take that into consideration because what we want to avoid is, we want to make sure that we have enough money to fully fund our public schools. You saw all the folks who are here watching their kids say the Pledge of Allegiance. I doubt that many of those people have lived in Willmet for the past 20 or 30 years. I'm guessing they've moved from the city, from other suburbs, from around the country and around the world, and they've chosen Willmet, again, not because of the great nightlife, you know, we've got the lake, which is terrific, but most people come here, whether in the recent past or in the distant past, for our terrific public schools. So to make sure that we can meet the needs, I would encourage you to exercise the full levy and keep doing what you're doing, which is a great job of administering our school system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Ford. I'm a Willmet resident. Excuse my froggy voice and lousy migraine, so I'm going to read some quick remarks, and I'll be on my way. And additionally, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for your hard work and dedication to education in Willmet. There's a great quote on the wall outside. It says, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest." Anyone know who said that?
What, we actually, go ahead.
Ben Franklin. It's right in the wall. So with, I think it's important that we have the full knowledge, especially in light of just hearing the last two people speak. It's my understanding that the budget is fully funded for next year with no levy increase needed at all. Is that correct?
So I just want to clarify, this isn't a question and answer period, it's a comment period. So the standing practice of the board is that we just, so that's why we didn't all yell out Benjamin Franklin, just to be clear.
Okay. It's my understanding that the budget is fully funded with no tax levy needed. The levy has gone up 32% in eight years, three times that of the CPI, twice the increase of Willmet's median household income. Higher property taxes and more spending do not equal better schools. Many suburban Chicago schools perform better and rank higher on fewer dollars spent per student than Willmet District 39. Since 2007, District 39 has incurred more than $137,000 in fines from the State of Illinois for spiking salaries prior to teacher retirements, which fattens pensions and contributes to Illinois financial crisis. The school board should show they are defending students and taxpayers against such abuse before considering any other levy increase. District 39 has been preparing for an eventual property tax freeze that hasn't happened and anticipating other State of Illinois financial issues for the next decade. They should be transparent about where the money is before considering another tax levy increase. If at any time, an unmet need arises, District 39 can ask for a referendum and make their case to the voters for more funds. Thank you.
Thank you. See what, we've got a bit of a line going, so go ahead, and then after that, I'm going to go ahead and respect the line that's going, going on there. Thank you, go ahead.
My name's Maya Crystal, and I'm a Willmet resident and graduate of District 39 schools. And I've been doing the band program since fifth grade, and I'm currently enrolled in freshman band at New Trier. And I know that band was brought up at the last board meeting, and I just wanted to say, in terms of both sectionals and having band as graded, I believe that through my experience, they're very beneficial. First of all, sectionals, especially in High Crest Middle School, it's originally where you learn your instrument. It's like how you learn the basics of your instrument, and also, especially as you continue to the junior high school, many students don't have a private teacher at that point, and sectionals are important in order to develop as a player. And it does not necessarily like affect your academics as much as some people believe because they rotate the schedule so that you're not missing the same class week after week. You tend to be missing a different class each week, or at least they try to. And also, in terms of having a grade for band, I believe that it was beneficial because it motivates students to work harder, and it is a way to like get some recognition for your effort, and I feel like that's important for students. And in New Trier, it is graded. It's an elective course and treated as a grade that does, I believe, affect your GPA. And it's better to start that in junior high school to help students adjust. Willmet is the biggest feeder school for New Trier and sends the most kids to the band program, and weakening the band program in Willmet schools would weaken the entire New Trier Township band program, and I believe that's very unfair, especially because of the strength of the music program in our district and in the New Trier Township. This year, the top bands at New Trier are going to play at Carnegie Hall, and that is in big part because of the strong players that come out of the district. And I believe that we should not alter the band program in a way that would negatively affect the students, and I believe student opinions should be heard on this subject, and it shouldn't just be people who haven't gone through the program's decision, that the thoughts of those students should be heard.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Lori Goldstein. I live in Willmet within the District 39 borders, and we, my spouse and I have three children who are all alumni of District 39. They received an excellent education, and I just want to publicly thank Dr. Lechner, who served the district for all 15 years, that my children were in District 39 schools, and we interacted with you, and I just appreciate your excellent service. My children, as I said, received an excellent education, and my spouse and I want to make sure that children these days in District 39 continue to receive that excellent education. And so because of that, we support the tax levy because we do know that funding the schools is very important. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kevin Feely. I'm a, my wife and I are residents of Willmet in 610 Laurel Avenue. We've had three children, two are currently in District 39, and one is in New Trier. I just want to make a couple statements to urge the board to not extend the levy. I think the existing tax base provides sufficient funding for the budget, and because the budget is fully funded, I guess I see no reason to raise additional taxes. It's as simple as that. As to the rate of inflation, the statement made previously is correct. There was a 37% increase in revenues to the district over the last, you know, nine years or so. That's three times the rate of inflation. So staying with the rate of inflation is not a sufficient basis to extend levy into the next year. We've heard a lot about, well, the State of Illinois is in trouble, we, we don't know what will come out of Springfield. I think that's just pure conjecture. You're right, we do not know. But what we do know is that the State of Illinois just increased income taxes by 33%. So I think this is a time to exercise restraint and not extend the levy in the face of an increase in income taxes. And I believe, as a federal income tax lawyer, what we will see is a raise in our federal income taxes through this tax reform discussion. One other statement I wanted to take issue with was with, one board member had indicated that if the levy is not extended, then that money is lost forever. Well, I think implicit in that type of statement is the belief that the money already belongs to the district, and that it's only the board's decision to not levy that allows the taxpayers to keep the money. Now, I believe that's a fundamental misconception of your role as stewards of your budget. And frankly, it's, you know, it's concerning to me that you would do it just because you can. So I would urge the board to not, to exercise restraint and not to extend the levy into the upcoming year. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Miles. I live in Willmet. I have written the board to ask you not to extend the tax levy, but there's been some new information since I wrote, which is why I'm speaking here as well. I'm not alone, I know, in hoping to rein in our property taxes, but I would like to respond to some of those people who have written to say, let's keep pace with inflation. And it's frustrating to me because inflation, the CPI, is 2.1%, and the board is seeking a 4.36%, I think, increase in the budget, which is more than double the rate of inflation. So for those residents who say, let's keep pace with inflation, I would say, yeah, that's a start. That's half of what you're seeking. If you had kept pace with inflation, your budget last year would have been 40 million instead of 50 million. That's 25% higher. If we just look at your budget since the 2010 levy, which raised your budget 20% in that one year, it would have been roughly 40, your budget in 2010 was 44 million. If we only kept pace with inflation since then, your budget would be $49,669 that you'd be seeking this year, which is a million dollars more than you had last year. We're not just keeping pace with inflation. Our property taxes on average have increased more than, your revenue from property taxes has increased 25%, but our home values have dropped, and our rates of property taxes have almost doubled in the last 13 years. So Illinois property taxpayers are already the second highest taxed in the country, and I would ask that you not further devalue our properties by increasing taxes just because you can. I also would like to note with some irony that of the 41 people who wrote to the board opposing, in favor of the tax increase, 37 of them sought property tax reductions, 20 of them obtained property tax reductions. I would also note that eight of the nine members sitting in front of me on the board have also sought property tax reductions. Three of you are still before the appeals board. So while collectively you've reduced your own property values $850,000, it's likely to go up to more than a million, given where you are right now. The total reduction of the 35 people who sought reductions, who wrote to you asking you not to, not, to increase the levy, they reduced their property tax values by $1.76 million so far. So while they want to increase your budget, they want other people to pay for it. And I think it's important to remember, when we're looking at what we're going to do with the school's budget, that the people who are here and benefiting from it won't be able to anymore if we can't afford to live here. So I ask that this year, when you don't have to increase the budget, that you not increase the budget. You were ready for a property tax freeze, you were ready for a pension pickup, neither one of those things happened. This year, when our income taxes are going up too, you can give the residents of Willmet a break by not taking money just because you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, as I said at the beginning, appreciate.
Hello, my name is Evan Cannell. I'm a resident of Willmet. My kids go to school here. I'm going to shift gears back to the band thing because I'm, it's important that doesn't disappear from our mindset in the sight of tax levies. I wanted to just make a few comments by, that by making the recommendation that the district removed grading from band and orchestra, and by starting a misinformed conversation about removing band and orchestra from the school day, the board has in effect begun the strategic plan review process with the foregone conclusion that band and orchestra are not on par with and should not enjoy the same functional tools as any other curricular subject. Putting conclusion before process makes seeking community input into a fishing expedition to find support for what has already been decided. The response that I've received from our petition, which I'll deliver to you when I'm done, continues to argue that band is not curricular, but sometimes referred to as co-curricular and other times extracurricular. To that, I have some questions, and not surprisingly, some answers. So a few questions, which I know you won't answer, so I will. Question, does band and orchestra have a curriculum that aligns with state and national standards like any other curricular subject? And the answer to that is yes. Does band and orchestra, do band and orchestra teachers need to be qualified and licensed as any curricular teacher does? Yes. Do band and orchestra teachers need to fulfill the same requirements of evaluation through the Danielson Framework as curricular teachers? Yes. Do band and orchestra teachers need to fulfill the same requirements of the para-student learning outcomes as curricular teachers? Yes. Are band and orchestra teachers held to the same standard and legal obligations for IEP and 504 plans as all curricular teachers? Yes. Are band and orchestra teachers participant in the state mandated Response to Intervention Program as are all curricular teachers? Yes. The only reason we have to have this discussion is because of the inequality we're allowing. I hear you say that students want to drop out of instrumental music because they're pressured to get good grades, but aren't students supposed to work towards good grades in their curricular courses? Here's some more questions. Do band and orchestra teachers have a regularly scheduled time of day when students are assigned to them so that they can deliver board-approved curriculum in a predictable, timely manner? No, they don't. Are band and orchestra teachers guaranteed a set of students who are obligated to participate until they have fulfilled that requirement? No, they don't. If math class were optional, inconvenient, and required more time and money from families, would students ask to drop out? I'll let you decide that one. If a student was identified as struggling in science and needed, and in need of a response to intervention plan, would anyone suggest she quit science class? Or would a team develop a solution allowing her to work towards success within the school framework? Our mission statement says District 39's mission is to nurture, guide, and challenge students to become creative thinkers, collaborators, and socially responsible, compassionate, and productive citizens of global society. So my question, what part of that mission is fulfilled by standardized testing? The overwhelming pressure we have, the only overwhelming pressure to only have consideration for those subjects that can be quantified, quantifiably documented, is squeezing humanity out of the schools. As we need to find more time and more money for standardized testing, we're laying groundwork to say, band and orchestra aren't graded, why do they get class time during the day? And then if they don't meet during the day and they don't get grades, they seem to just be a club. Given the context of the board's formal statements about grades, I worry that this is the first step towards dismantling a successful popular program that is quite literally considered one of the best in the nation. If you're unaware, our students and directors have been invited multiple times to international music education conferences where people from all over the world come to see our groups, our school groups perform. What I and the over 400 people who have signed the petition are asking is not unreasonable. We simply ask that you take time to consider in earnest why drastic changes to the instrumental music program will benefit students. With the abundance of research supporting beyond a doubt that instrumental music greatly benefits students socially, emotionally, and academically, we need you to help us understand why you seek to lessen rather than increase the import in our children's lives. Thank you for your time and your service. I may not always understand your decisions, but I really do appreciate your efforts very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, that's fine.
Good evening. My name is Jill Williamson, and I live in Willmet. I am a parent of a High Crest sixth grader in band, a WGHS eighth grader in band and jazz band, and a senior who is in three instrumental music ensembles at New Trier. During the last board meeting on October 23rd, a statement of recommendation from the board to the administration was unanimously voted upon. This statement reads as follows. "It should no longer be the practice of the district that grades for extracurricular activities, including band, be a part of school report cards." In an effort to educate myself and further understand exactly how the grades 5 through 8 instrumental music program fits into our schools, I went to both the High Crest and WGHS websites. Under academics, I clicked on the Curriculum and Instruction tab, which brought up a comprehensive list of the existing curriculum in District 39. On every list, instrumental music was listed in grades 5, 6, 7, Grades 7 and 8 3D Art, English Language Arts; grades 7 and 8 Painting, Drama, French, German, Improvisational Drama; grades 5 through 8 Instrumental Music; Latin, Technology, Library Media, Mandarin, Math; grades K through 8 General Music; Musical Theater; grades K through 8 Physical Education and Health; Science, Social Studies, Spanish, and Technology Applications. Clicking on the grades 5 through 8 Instrumental Music tab brings up a six-page curriculum map for this program, which contains national and state standards and goals, as well as guiding questions, concepts, and assessments of knowledge and skills. If instrumental music is indeed co-curricular or extracurricular, as was described in the board's statement of recommendation, why is it listed as curricular on District High Crest and WJHS websites? I do not see cross-country, science, Olympiad, basketball, or wrestling on this list, all of which were other activities used as co-curricular or extracurricular comparisons to the instrumental music program. I understand that the board is using the 2017-18 D39 strategic plan to gather feedback from parents, students, and teachers about the program, and to address some of the important concerns and issues that do exist: scheduling, sectionals, creating a program, Solly House, and D39 being a few examples. I was invited by Principal Kelly Jackson to participate in one of the parent meetings collecting feedback for the strategic plan. The meeting was moderated by an independent consultant. We were asked to answer questions regarding the structure of the program and also had opportunity to share some of our thoughts and experiences. The first action step, as defined in the strategic plan, reads, and I quote, "Number one: Gather input feedback from all District 39 parents and students regarding the instrumental music program, including any potential recommended changes." My parent meeting, along with one other than I am aware of, was held on November 6th. The statement of recommendation voted upon by the board was presented on October 23rd, two weeks before these parents took place, parent meetings took place. So my question is: Where is the research data or reasons for this recommendation? What is it based upon, and why is this recommendation being made? How will eliminating band and orchestra grades from report cards uphold or improve our program? The six other feeder schools in Nutria all consider instrumental music as curricular, co-curricular, and provide feedback through grades to their students. High Crest WJHS instrumental programs have provided grades for 30 years to the children in our district as a means of feedback and accountability, and in preparation for their progression into Nutria, which treats instrumental music as curricular and academic. We are certainly fortunate to reside in a district which places high value on quality music education. I look forward to continued conversation as parents, teachers, board members, and administration work together to create effective and sustainable solutions that will uphold and enhance the educational excellence that District 39 currently provides to our children. I would like to thank you, Dr. Luckner, and the entire board for all the time, care, and effort that you're devoting to this important endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Lind. We live in Willmet. My husband and I have two children in college, one 10th grader and an 8th grade daughter, and we have lived in Willmet for 17 years. I had prepared five minutes' worth of comments, but I'm going to stick to just about one minute because the comments I prepared were essentially spoken by the first speaker. I really... I would simply be echoing everything she said, really. So I would just limit it to say, to request that you do not cut the funding by failing to keep pace with inflation. We are wholeheartedly in favor of your proposal to extend the levy, to maintain our community's commitment to this education. Our college kids have said repeatedly that they feel incredibly well-prepared for college across the board: language arts, math, and science, and everything. And they really started that in kindergarten. And I feel like to cut that would really cut, would lessen the grounding that they've had throughout their K through 12 years here. I wanted to publicly express gratitude to Dr. Luckner and to your staff. As a mother of four for the last 17 years, I really mean it when I say, on a daily basis, I feel grateful, knowing that my kids have been in such competent hands and caring hands. There are mornings when we have good mornings and mornings where someone flies out the door on an empty stomach, and I just rest assured that they're going to have a good day. I feel like my four children have really thrived in District 39. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Tom Nathan, and we've lived here for 38 years. I guess my wife's lived here 64 years. I don't tell her I told you that. In... Many of you know me. In the '80s, I served on CRC, and in '89 to '97, I served on the school board. And I want to offer you a historical perspective because in 1990-91, we faced the same issue you're facing now. Let me start by saying that property taxes should not be the way any municipal service should be funded. Having said that, that's the reality we live with. The challenge you have is raising the levy as you've been authorized to do by referendum and public support, or not do it and run the risk of the consequences of the decision in not doing so. And I'm going to share with you in a moment, after I give three observations, what happened to us by when we had a vote on this. Your challenge is you have in front of you two very potentially disastrous decisions coming out, or legislation coming out of Springfield. One is a cap, a freeze on property taxes for two years. Revenues for school districts and other bodies accumulate. If you freeze them, you lose the accumulated value of those dollars. Your other bigger risk is that the pension funds will be transferred to you. I do not know how any elected official or businessperson could operate in a vacuum and not make their decisions based on an analysis of future risk. And I can tell you that the community in Willmet stands behind you in raising the levy as you've been authorized to do so, and we have living proof of that fact, in that you have had recently an election, 11 months, 12 months ago, where the winners of that election stood for particular principles, as I understood them. And you're here, and someone else is not. More importantly, this community very happily supported a referendum, giving you by 60-plus percent of the vote, the ability to do what you should do tonight. Because you are... When you vote on this in December, you have an obligation to do it. So you are... You have been fiscally prudent, and when I say "you," it's those of you sitting here and those who've sat here before you. We are a fiscally prudent district who's been committed, which has been committed to providing excellent education. You're doing that, and we've done that in the past. And when you hear loud, shrill voices in the distance or in this room, do not think they're anything representative of a majority. You have captured the support of the 85% of us who do not have children in this district, and you've earned that support. And it's been there over and over and over again, as has been the support of your parent body. We know what the value of education is, and that's the most important thing in our lives when we look at the product of our children today as a result of that education. Historically, we were faced with the first property tax cap. This was in 1990-91. And the board had an opportunity, I'm not going to bore you with the history that preceded that, to extend the levy to the allowable amount. And I voted against that. I voted for extending the levy. The majority of the board did not, and the cumulative loss of that was dramatic. And what followed is what's instructive. What was instructive is we had to do three things. We had to make drastic cuts. We had to raise student fees to about $700 per student, and we created the foundation. But the cuts we made, particularly in staffing all across the board, put a stress on the district. Five teacher negotiations in eight years. The morale was hideous. We couldn't attract teachers, and it took 10 years, almost 10 years, to get over the devastation of that decision. Do not repeat history, please.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi. My name is Katie Hauser. My husband and I have had four children go through District 39, and I'm also a real estate agent.
And I'm sorry, could you state your community of residence as well?
Oh, Willmet.
Thank you.
Sorry. And a shout-out to Willmet nightlife. I think it's actually great. Okay. I understand the board will vote in December on whether to extend the tax levy in order to keep pace with cost of living increases. I'm here to share my perspective from the standpoint of someone who serves prospective buyers and home sellers on a regular basis. Overwhelmingly, I see new families move to a community such as District 39 in search of good schools. Failing to increase the tax levy to keep pace with inflation would deviate from the board's past practice of maintaining a consistent investment in education. Prospective buyers do not like uncertainty regarding school funding. As a real estate agent, I can tell you that uncertainty about a school district's stability and commitment to education does not help home values or home sellers within the district. After the referendum passed with an overwhelming community commitment to education, and after an appreciable increase in taxes, homes began to sell more quickly. The median number of days on market fell from 111 days in April of 2010, which was before the referendum, to 69 days in April 2012, the spring market after the referendum. An increase in taxes accompanied by this community's demonstrated investment in education helped and did not hurt home sales in District 39. In the most current data, October 2017, the median number of days on market for homes in District 39 was 45 days, which is substantially less than the pre-referendum number of 79 in October 2010. As a final point, at looking at home sales data, I looked at the median home sale price. The median home price in District 39 in March 2011, pre-referendum, was $581,000. The median home sale price in District 39 in March 2017 was $680,000. This is a 17% increase in median home sale price. As a real estate agent, the data I see and the clients I serve indicate that maintaining a consistent commitment to and investment in education is desirable by prospective buyers and good for both home values generally and home sellers in particular. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Phillips, Willmet resident. I have small children. We moved to Willmet so our kids could go to school here. The tool of the levy to help keep up with inflation is an important tool that was given to you by the voters, and I hope you'll vote to extend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Werner. I'm a Willmet resident. I have two children in District 39 as well. I will keep my remarks brief as well. I just wanted to also urge you to extend the levy. And I also want to say that I don't think you would vote to extend the levy just because you can. I think Mr. Nathan's comments are something to keep in mind. I think it's something you need to vote to do because it's the responsible thing to do, given the uncertainties at the state level, and given the history that he just laid out of what can happen if you don't make that choice. So I don't believe... Personally, and I think, as Mr. Nathan said, you have a lot of support from the community that this would not be a vote just because you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Thomas Mead. I am a resident of Willmet, and I've had seven kids go through District 39, three still there. As a professor at Northwestern, who has trained and obviously spends a lot of time on education, I can't imagine the hypocrisy of this board, who are hiring lawyers to reduce their personal taxes and at the same time burden others.
Thank you.
I'm Mark Wiremiller. I'm from the community of Willmet. I'm not sure if I've heard it referred to that before, but I live on Lawndale Street. A lot of you guys probably know me from my Halloween exhibit, which has featured tax levies in the past. As you guessed, I oppose the tax levy increase. I oppose any increases in taxes, especially property taxes. Some background on me: I do do some political stuff. I'm very active in basically getting less taxes in Illinois. I want to save Illinois. I want... We have a huge amount of declining population in Illinois. People are leaving Illinois. A big reason is the property taxes. I have three kids go through District 39. My kids are now in their 20s, out of college and stuff. So I'm probably one of those people that, like, "Oh, I don't have kids there. I don't want to pay for it." So... And I'm that way. I don't want to pay for it. I didn't want to pay for it before. It's just way too much money on my property tax bill. I'm in the real estate business. I would dispute what the person said earlier. A lot of that data is from multiple listing services and stuff. I see property in Willmet very stagnant, and I don't see it going up in value. So that's one of my concerns, especially what's going on in Springfield and stuff. We don't know... Somebody mentioned whether we're going to have Bruce Ranner or J.B. Pritzker, or Jeannie Ives is somebody people are talking about. So we don't know what's going to happen with Springfield. It's usually bad stuff for us in Chicago. So my thoughts on the levy... By the way, I looked up something today. I was the only one who spoke at a park board meeting two years ago on the levy. So I'm glad there's some people interested in this one. Obviously, this is the bigger one. I believe there are 17 different levies on our tax bill. So this is one of 17. By the way, I pay 62 different taxes in Illinois, including things like taxes on soda pop, capital gains tax because I made some money one year, 10-and-a-quarter sales tax. So all this stuff adds up. My... Someone else mentioned the pensions. I'm hoping the pensions get put back to the local school districts, and that would force you guys to do IRAs, 401Ks, and have a pension like me. That's 100% funded, and it's not funded on future taxpayers. So it'd be great if... It'd be wonderful if District 39 took the initiative and maybe the first one in the state to do this. And I understand, they say it's illegal, the teachers' union, you can't do that, but I believe you can. I believe on new contracts, you can do whatever you want. It's interesting, two people pointed out the tax reductions. We appeal our taxes all the time. It's a big scam in Illinois. You got to hire Michael Madigan or Ed Burke or somebody, Richard Shapiro. As soon as you get your tax bill, you try to get a reduction. This is what people do. Everybody wants less taxes. I don't care. There ought to be a thing in the box where you can say, "I want to pay more taxes." And then the people that want to pay more taxes, the people voting yes on these referendums, they could just do it. In fact, I think you could just send money over here. And I would encourage those people to pay more taxes so the rest of us could pay less taxes. Quick mention on the band. I know if you don't get the referendum, this is what the history in the schools is. You're going to say, "Well, we're going to cut out arts and music and everything else." So I'm all for band. I don't know much about it, but the band people sound good. I hope you keep that. Ending, I've got about 20 seconds left. I would like to cut the taxes, cut the levy, lower the taxes, give some people, the homeowners in Willmet, something, just give them some money back. So let's think about lowering the levy. That's my proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Kara Gaziano, and I live in Willmet. My husband and I have four children that are either in the district now or have been, and they've received wonderful education here. We fully support the levy, and the only reason I'm speaking is I want to apologize to all of you for the personal attacks and the rude, obnoxious behavior that you are subjected to when you are devoting so much of your time and energy to looking out for our schools and our community. There are many here who are very grateful for that.
I'm sorry. Please, no applause, but thank you for the comment. We're having a little trouble hearing in the back, it looks like, so please make sure you speak into the mic. And our AV people, I don't know if you can turn it up or not, but...
Hi. Good evening. My name...
We also have plenty of room up front. You guys are welcome to come a little closer forward.
A little bit like church, huh? Hi. My name is Bill Arnold. My wife, Seal, and I have resided in the community of Willmet for 42 years. We now reside on Michigan Avenue for the last 34 years. I'm here to give a grandparents' perspective. We have two daughters who went to the District 39 schools and now have three grandchildren who are in the District 39 schools. In fact, and two that passed through the District 39 schools and are now in Nutria. All five children actually sat in the classrooms that their mothers sat in. I got to go back, my wife and I got to go back as grandparents to parent-teacher nights and relive some wonderful, wonderful memories. In fact, and two that passed through the District 39 schools and are now in Nutria. All five children actually sat in the classrooms that their mothers sat in. I got to go back, my wife and I got to go back as grandparents to parent-teacher nights and relive some wonderful, wonderful memories. The bottom line is, please extend the levy. Please keep this district fiscally sound. The educational system is wonderful. We moved here for that. We're so happy that we moved here for that. We've had nothing but positive experiences ourselves, our children, and our grandchildren, and we'd like to pass that on to the next generation. So please help us do that and extend the levy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Powers. I live in Willmet. Have one issue with Tribune story recently about pension raises in the last few years of teachers' time of service, and they call it spiking. Tribune refers to it as spiking. District 39, it was mentioned before, had somewhere around $135,000 in penalties. It doesn't say if it's in one year or over a course of years, but I just sent this as an email to Ray, so I'd like to just get it into the record, too. Is this practice still going on? Are we still spiking pensions here at the same time we're actually asking for a tax increase? And if it is occurring, is this included in the budget? Do we, can taxpayers actually see budget numbers of spiking occurring? Also, since we're getting penalized for this, are the penalties in the budget, are we anticipating? Like, if we continue to do this in 2018, let's say, are we budgeting for tax penalties to be paid in 2018? I don't know if this is like just a compliance issue or it's actually a law that this is done, but it seems to me like this is something that the public should be able to know when they're looking at what exactly are we spending our money on? Are we spending it on things that are valuable to education? Are we spending it on penalties because we are not complying with the rules as the state has made up? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carleen McAllister. I've had four kids go through Willmet. I live in Willmet. And with four kids, we've had, thankfully, been able to take advantage of lots of different services. One thing I'd like to mention that some people have not is the fact that a public school guarantees education to all the kids, no matter what their needs are. And for that, we're really grateful. Unlike people here, I can't say that I never, ever complained about the district, but I did know that because of public law, I could advocate for my kids and they could get what they needed here. So I'm so grateful for programs like the three times a year screening to catch kids with reading problems. That's fantastic and almost unheard of in most districts, so. And I support all the other programs people mentioned. And a couple last thing regarding other comments is all teacher salaries are online. You can search for almost any budget or teacher salary thing that you want. So I don't think there's a lack of transparency there. And of course, we're counting on you to do well with money, but I grew up in New York State where, at least in the past, every citizen voted every single year on every school budget. And on years when the budget was voted down, then they would say, okay, well, if you want it to be less, how about this menu of programs? Which one do you want to cut? Almost every time, everybody wanted every single one of those programs. And I have a feeling it's the same case here. So thank you for what you're doing and for maintaining fiscal soundness in the district. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jason Klinger, resident of Willmet. I know some of you, I've coached some of your kids. So 10 years ago, I didn't even know where Willmet was. So I met Amy, moved out here. She has a son in District 39. I grew up in Chicago Public School District, and this is very interesting to me because growing up in Chicago Public School District, going to five different public schools, I remember days where we didn't have lunches, we could barely get, you know, an extra thing of milk. We had 40 to 50 kids in the classrooms. It was really rough.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Please address the board with your comments. That's the purpose. Appreciate it.
Okay. Well, I'm really talking to you guys back there. So basically, what I'm trying to say is I'm not going to talk about levies or band or anything. We had no opportunity for band at any of the public schools I was at until I got to Lane Tech. No levy issues, but we have a really good community, and I'm really happy that the kids have these opportunities because there's a lot of communities around the area that do not have these opportunities at all. And we're very affluent. We can afford to do this for our kids, and I'm happy I'm actually in the opportunity to do it, too. Yeah, that's about all I got to say.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Newman. I live in Willmet. I grew up in Willmet, and my parents moved here for the schools and went through the schools. I returned and student-taught at McKenzie, and I'm currently a teacher in a neighboring district. My son attends District 39, so these are very important issues to me. And Willmet, I think, prides itself on our public education, providing education for all, and any cuts that we make to public education will be seen in our community and by outside communities as cuts to public education. And I don't think that is the message that we want to broadcast. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. It feels great to be back in District 39. My name is Keith Ronan. I've resided in Willmet since 1993. I have served as president of the CRC and as a member of the District 39 School Board from 2007-15, including two years as president, and served as chair of the Finance Committee for a number of years. Since stepping off the District 39 Board, I've remained involved with educational issues in our community. I was selected by the Nutria High School Board to serve as a community-at-large member on its Finance Committee before being elected to the Board this past April. I've also been appointed to serve on an advisory committee that advises the governor of the State Board of Education and legislators on disability issues in grades K-12. My comments this evening are in my capacity as a resident of District 39 community, and I have three points to make. One, I support the levy. Two, I have direct knowledge of the history of the district and wish to clarify some inaccurate comments made by the public regarding district finances. And three, to suggest the Board adopt a resolution increasing the 30% levy target amount to reflect the current Board practice and to maintain the financial health of District 39. As you may recall, after making significant budget cuts in 2009 and 2010, in 2011, the Board of Education voted unanimously to place a referendum on the ballot asking the voters for a tax rate increase in the operating funds. Also in 2011, to limit the amount of ask for the referendum as much as possible, the Board adopted a resolution establishing the goal of sustaining minimum operating fund balances at a level equivalent to 30% of the operating fund budget. Our laws allow the taxpayers to decide by referendum if they want additional revenue for our schools. The Board asked the community how we should move forward. The taxpayers had the opportunity to determine whether to increase revenue and invest in our schools or proceed with additional cuts in staff and programs to balance the budget. By a vote of 63% in favor, the taxpayers voted yes to a referendum on April 5, 2011. During the course of the referendum, we heard from many community members that the Board must consider all options to make sure expenses don't exceed revenue. The Board listened to the community. The 2013-16 collective bargaining agreement with the Willmet Education Association was one of its kind for the North Shore in that it eliminated step and provided that compensation would be CPI-based. I've watched some of the Board meetings on video and reviewed many of the emails posted on the district website. I've also heard many comments from community members tonight. It is clear to me that many people do not understand the levy process. I strongly encourage the public to read the information item in tonight's Board Packet, which is an excellent summation regarding the levy. I've also heard some members of the public write or speak inaccurately about District 39 finances. An example would be confusing local property tax revenue, which is received from the levy, with other revenue sources such as personal property replacement taxes, earnings on investments, student fees, and state and federal sources, which is not subject to the levy. I do not have the time to go into more detail here, but a few things need to be clarified. In the last four years, ending June 30, 2017, revenue from property taxes increased only on an average of approximately 2.5% annually, and labor costs for teachers and support increased on an average of approximately 2.13% annually. The goal of moving to CPI-based compensation was to align labor costs with property tax revenue, and that is exactly what this district has done. It is also important to understand that in addition to teacher and support staff labor costs, the school also has significant costs each year to maintain its six school buildings and this administration center. In November of 2016, the Board voted unanimously to approve the current 2016-19 collective bargaining agreement, which is CPI-based. To forego a levy increase is in reality a budget cut. That might require teacher and support staff reductions or an accelerated drawdown of reserves. Finally, since the 30% Board Resolution in 2011, there have been a number of school Board elections in District 39. The current group of elected officials should always review prior Board Resolutions, and perhaps it's time for the Board to consider increasing the 30% levy target to reflect current Board practice and to maintain the financial health of the district. Given the potential of possible tax freeze, shift to pension costs, and other unknowns given the financial problems of the state, it would not be unreasonable to do so. And look at other comparable districts, and you will see they much have much higher reserve targets. And thank you very much. And by the way, during my terms on Board, I've never applied for property tax. God, I heard that comment before.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Okay. Thank you very much, and I want to just say thank you also for bearing with us. We got through a number of people in about three minutes each, so I appreciate it on average, and I appreciate the respectful discourse that we were able to achieve. Next up, we have Board Reports. First, our Committee Reports. Our first committee report is Facility Development Committee. Ms. Chev, you have this. Sorry.
I do. Okay, the Facilities Committee met last Thursday, November 9, as part of the Committee of the Whole Meeting here at the MEC. The topic of the meeting was the proposed high crests construction. As a reminder, the Board is planning to begin construction this summer on a four-classroom and four breakout room addition, and also in addition to relocate the school's offices and make improvements to school security. At the meeting, the Committee discussed some design decisions such as exterior materials for the two additions and window designs. These directions, this direction will allow our architect and construction manager to prepare bid packets so that we can move ahead to solicit contractor bids. We will have a report later tonight with a Board vote to approve going to bid. The next meeting of the Facilities Committee is Monday, December 11 at 8:00 a.m. here at the MEC.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have the School Finance Committee Report. Mr. Panzika, has that.
The Finance Committee met Thursday, November 9. We discussed four topics, two of which will be discussed tonight in much greater detail. We covered the draft of the student fees for fiscal year 19 and talked about the special education bus transportation bid that's going out for bid. In addition, the two topics that we'll cover in more detail, we had a discussion on the audit, which we'll have a presentation tonight, and on the levy, surprisingly enough, which we also will be discussing quite a bit more tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe you have the next report as well, which is our Liaison Committee Report from the CRC.
In a new category. The CRC met last Monday. They are working on identifying the differences between differentiated learning and personalized learning. After the initial coordination steps of the meeting, they broke into separate groups to continue their discussion. The next meeting will be on December 4.
Thank you. And now we have the WICSE or Willmet Community Special Education Agreement. I'm going to read that because Ms. Sternweiler could not be here tonight. WICSE met at Mary Murphy District 37 School Monday, November 6. The Advisory Board accepted the FY17 Annual Financial Report and approved the fiscal year-to-date activity. The locations and dates of the 2018 Summer Enrichment Program were presented. Those programs will be held at WJHS and Ramona Schools this summer between June 20 and July 4. There is no school on July 4. Lastly, the Board discussed the function of WICSE outside of the fiscal sharing as collaborating and providing services for students with individual education plans or IEPs. This partnership is greatly needed and appreciated by both districts. The next WICSE meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 19 at 4:00 p.m. at the MEC. And with that, we move to C, which is our Legislative Update. Ms. Kearney.
Thank you. Since we last met, it's all about property tax increase. Excuse me, legislation. Since we last met, Senate Bill 851 advanced to the House, passed but was not considered by the Senate during the fall veto session. It's important to note the details of this bill as we highly suspect that you'll see this in the new legislative session, January of 18. The details of this bill. One, the bill would have imposed a mandatory two-year temporary property tax freeze on taxing districts located within Cook and Coller Counties. Coller Counties, just so everyone knows, are Lake, DuPage, McHenry, Kane, and Will for the 17, 18, this year and next year levy years. In other words, would not allow a district's tax extension to be any more in levy year 17 and 18 than it was in 16 without voter approval, without going to referendum, in other words. Two, part of this, county boards in all of the other counties that are not part of Coller Counties or Cook County would be authorized to ask voters via referendum if a two-year property tax freeze should be imposed on taxing districts within the counties. If approved, the property tax freeze would be effective for the 18, 19 school years. That doesn't include our county, but, or the Coller Counties, the other counties that I just met, all other counties in Illinois. In addition, the bill would increase two property tax exemptions for qualified residents outside of Cook County. The purpose of these increases is technically, or argued, is to establish parity with Cook County property taxes. Cook County property tax exemptions offered to qualified Cook County residents, exemptions already received by Cook County residents earlier this year through legislation. So again, in other words, we, Cook County, received higher exemptions. Other counties didn't. So the other counties now would have been, it would have been part of this bill. And it plans, the rumor is it still will be part of this bill in 18. Additionally, here we go. Additionally, certain districts that were designated as qualified school districts would have been exempt from any extension, limitation, or freeze. In other words, they wouldn't have been subject to the property tax freeze. In lay terms, qualified school districts are defined as one that has been granted a financial hardship exemption by the state superintendent after being designated on financial watch or early warning status. So again, that would probably be less property wealthy districts according to their EAV. So again, it's been argued that that would, a property tax freeze would hurt districts that are already struggling, while actually districts that are already struggling have been on this list would be exempt from that freeze. Four, the bill would exempt bond payments and indebtedness and contribution for pension funds. Again, in language we all mostly understand, that means districts subject to PTAL, like districts like ours, would still be able to levy, extend the levy up to the 5% rate that we currently fall under this law, up to the 5% rule tied to debt payments and pension fund contributions. So while there would be a tax freeze for all other parts of the levy, the district would still be, any district would still be able to levy, to extend tax, to increase taxes, to pay for debt or the pension obligation. Finally, the bill would, that's what I just said. Finally, both sides of the aisle do take issue with this bill. One side of the aisle doesn't like it as they argue a property tax freeze combined with the potential for a voter-approved reduction in property taxes as allowed in the new education funding bill, Senate Bill 1945, will reduce education, will reduce, I went back, resources, resources to educate students statewide. And those two options, the property tax freeze and the options for constituents to go to referendum and lower their property tax... referendum and lower their property taxes, and just as a reminder, in the education bill, districts have the opportunity to do that who are over the who have been deemed at the funding adequacy, adequacy, I can never say that word, rate. We are at 130. If you're over 110, you have the option to do so via voter referendum. They argue that those two combinations would put education funding at risk. Additionally, it's argued it would exacerbate exacerbate the issue of equity statewide as EAV strong districts, District 39 is considered an EAV strong district, high property wealth, pass referenda while EAV weak districts struggle to do so. The other side of the aisle does not like this bill at all, as they argue it's not a true freeze, as PTO districts like ours can still extend the levy for debt payment and pension obligations. And it's and it's been argued that therefore districts would simply just borrow more money so they can levy more taxes. Therefore, I just said that part. Additionally, they do not like the fact that expense relief, i.e. ability to opt out of prevailing wage and other state mandates, state unfunded mandates, are not included. At the same time, revenues are being decreased, so saying that they haven't provided for expense relief, but at the same time, but while they're cutting revenue relief. That said, both, that's why it's it's an election year next year, and this is, I think, almost the 27th property tax bill that's gone through the legislature since in the last two years. It's both are saying it's a political move, so therefore, because when people run, they either want to say they voted for property tax relief or didn't vote for property tax release, relief. So look for that in January of 2018. That's all that's happened. Oh, and it did not pass the Senate. I did say that. They didn't take that up, and that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Kearney. And that brings us to our information items. First up is written communication.
Yes, and as we're aware, the board received a significant amount of written communication regarding the levy. All of this written communication is posted online, and we've also received other written communication this month. Beth Feeley regarding results of the 2017 School Climate Survey and types of training materials used. Lynn Abbott over reliance on electronic devices. And Sylvie Legere regarding operational excellence, taxes, and personalized learning.
I just want to make one comment on that, which is I want to thank the district for doing an excellent job of getting emails up online. We did have over 100 emails in total, and many of them came in the past few days. If you look at the packets, they do not have every email, because some of them came quite at the last minute, but we do have them all up online. So thank you again to the district for making that happen. Next up, administrative announcements.
Yes, the first one is School Board Members Day is Wednesday, November 15th, and I think tonight is the perfect night to acknowledge and thank you for your countless hours of volunteer work. I'm going to read this from the School Board Association. November 15th, 2017 is designated as School Board Members Day in Illinois. This is the district and community's opportunity to thank local Board of Education members for their commitment in providing local governance for the for young public for your public schools. Leadership for our community, for our schools, and for our future begins here with the tireless work of our locally elected school board members. So help us join with others throughout Illinois in recognizing their efforts, and I sincerely appreciate all that you do. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think we can clap on this one.
I gotta have to stop you from clapping. That's our new rule.
I had overruled the board president.
Parent-teacher conference is next. Thank you, Ray.
Yes, yes. Okay, District 39 had its annual parent-teacher conferences last week. They were extremely well-attended at all six of our schools. Conferences provided opportunities for families and teachers to collaborate, to discuss student progress, and provide student guidance on how to reflect and set goals. Next is the school report card. On October 31st, the State Board of Education released the school report cards of all of our schools across the state. We posted our District 39 report cards online and all of our websites. Data involving student achievements such as Park is included in the report card as per ISBE requirements. We're going to have a local achievement data report later this evening. Parents and community members who don't have a printer, you can request a hard copy by contacting us at the central office. And finally, I need to say that this announcement of the school board meets the legal requirements that we share the Illinois report card for posting and announcing on the district website, and we need to do this within 30 days of receipt.
Great, thank you very much. And that takes us to annual business in our, go ahead.
Yes.
In our fiscal year.
Yep.
Financial audit.
Yeah. For the 16th year in a row, District 39 has earned the highest financial rating, financial recognition. For exhibiting financial stability, our weighted score was four out of four, and Scott Dunzer will share highlights from the district's financial report. Gail, is there anything to add?
No. Okay. Yeah. All right. Thanks for having me back again. I appreciate the the opportunity to come and present the audit to you. I'm pleased to announce that again this year, we issued an unmodified or clean opinion on on the district's financial statements, and the district is again fiscally stable and moving forward. In addition to assisting the district in preparing the comprehensive annual financial report, which by the way is the most detailed and exhaustive report you can put together, the most transparent amount of information that a government can provide, it's it's board and its constituents. So that's props to you for taking the time to put that information together and get it out to the parties that need it. But in addition to the comprehensive annual financial report, we also submitted the annual financial report required by Illinois State Board of Education. That's their regulatory report where they they can gather all the data in a specific format and aggregated all the districts together. And we also completed the federal single audit, the Uniform Grant Guidance Act, and submitted the data collection form to the Federal Clearing House. So all your regulatory requirements for fiscal year 2017 are completed as of as of Like I just want to highlight again, the district did receive a perfect 4.0 financial profile score based on ISB's criteria, that's recognition status. There's no, the report should be similar to prior years, as there was no new significant governmental accounting standards that were implemented for fiscal year 17. Moving forward for next year, Governmental Accounting Standards Board Number 75 Regarding Other Post-Employment Benefits will be have to be implemented, and we'll work with management to get the proper information so we can implement that and satisfy the requirements, that receive another unmodified or clean opinion for the next year. Please, if you have any questions, I'm either tonight, or you can reach me by telephone. I don't hesitate to ask. This is a working relationship, and if anybody needs something, I'm always available throughout the year, not just at one time during the audit season. So feel free to reach out to me at any time during the year and the staff as well.
Great, thank you very much. Board members, do we have any questions? Mr. Sazareti?
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Scott, thank you for all the work you've done. We really appreciate it on your firm. I think in talking to Gail and Ray, that we're going to look for including some more financial ratios and comparative data about how our district performs versus other comparable districts, and including that. Also, and I did not bring this up to Gail, sorry, Gail, throw this at you right now. I've been thinking about the pension disclosures, and I've been a student of this for the last six months, so bear with me. And I don't want you to go into them, but but I think what we should think about doing is working on a way to make it even more transparent what the pensions owed are and and the accounting around that, and maybe in a higher, I know there's a ton of information, but where I'm going with this is making it more accessible to the layperson who doesn't, you know, in first blush, understand which pensions apply to which, you know, population, and and summarizing kind of where the liability sits at any one time.
Correct. That's something we can, there's a standard format we have to follow when we put the report together, but that information could be something that we could potentially include in the management discussion and analysis of part of the report, or even a transmittal letter part of the report.
Yeah, and that was something that we could do as administration, too, because he's following standard protocol, absolutely.
Yeah, I think, but MDNA makes sense. Any other questions? Mr. Panzic?
Yes, consistent with the theme of tonight, at what point does the reserve level start to impact the the grade that that you give starts to impact the the score? And is that a static, just looking at that current year, or is it also looking at the trend in making that distinction?
You're you're referring to the ISB financial profile score?
Yes.
There's actually, I believe, five components of it. Two are related to that. I believe, I'm going off memory now, one is days cash on hand, one I believe is revenues to expenses or net income, and the other ones, I think, revenue to fund balance. Now, I don't know, there's a ratio on all of them, and some of them are weighted differently, but that's information that I'm sure Gail can provide to the board, or I can also.
Thank you. Any other questions? Don't see any. Thank you very much for the report and for the audit.
Thanks for having me.
Next up, we have the 2018-2019 draft student fees.
Yes, with the exception of a single $10 increase to seventh-grade instructional material fees, no other fee increases are recommended for next year. We discussed this at the School Finance Committee meeting. That $10 increase covers iPad insurance, and as we're stepping into our iPad program that we started previously in grades five and six, this is the next step. There's also going to be a practice change that we proposed for bus registration at the meeting. As we discussed at the School Finance Committee meeting, the district, we're going to extend our end our required deadline for applying for buses to July 13th, but then we're going to have a hard cutoff. After that, anybody who signs up will be added two weeks after school is started. So this year, we had 266 families sign up for busing after the deadline, which really had a significantly negative impact on our bus routes. So we're going to make some improvements for next year and get those bus routes going better sooner.
Great, thank you very much. And next is our 2017 Fall Assessment Report.
No, High Crest bids.
Or we'll go with the 2018-2019 Solicitation of Bids for High Crest Edition. My fault.
Yes, this this, too, was reviewed by the Facility Development Committee, and Ellis Schaff did a nice job summarizing this, and this is the High Crest Edition project. The estimated cost for the project is $5.2 million to be paid out of reserves in the O&M Fund. Note that this does not give us final approval for the project. You have until February 2018 as a board to make a final decision. However, we do seek your approval just to go out for bid. Is there anything to add to that, Gail?
I actually have a question, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
In reading through this and in light of the conversations that we're having tonight, and I didn't think of this at Facilities, Ellis, so I don't mean to whatever, but I'm wondering, and I don't have the notes from Facilities on me, but what is the cost of air conditioning in this bid? Does anyone know off the top of their head? Okay.
We only give a schedule.
It's as one, I was wondering if we could suggest, and it's up to you, that we have two bids, just in case, one without air conditioning and one with, in case. Is that just impossible?
What you're suggesting is having air conditioning be an alternative. Is that right, Gail? Yes, we can set it up that way.
If, just to, so we have a choice.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Was, let me just ask, because I can't remember the air conditioning. Was the air conditioning just for the offices, or was it for the classrooms also?
No. Keeping with my practice, which can change, since I've been superintendent, that we add air conditioning to all new facilities that we build, because temperatures have been warm.
Okay, that's good.
But having but having an alternative is not a problem, but that is in keeping with my practice for many, many years.
And like you said, we're not making a decision tonight. An alternate is just nice to have.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? Now we can do the 2017 Fall Assessment Report.
Yes, what you're going to get is a relatively brief Fall Assessment summary of our performance series and Park assessment results from 2017. Please note that the that's the spring of 2017 was the last administration of performance series, as we're now using MAP. So as you're going to see, we continue to achieve above state averages, and Katie Lee has this report.
Good evening. I'll be sharing the 2017 Fall Assessment Report with you tonight, which will include the local assessment performance series and the state assessment Park. This is a different clicker for me. Thank you. Excuse me. Last year, the performance series assessment was administered for the final time, as Dr. Lekner shared, and as is our practice, the Fall Assessment Report shares results from the previous school year. So the 2018 Fall Assessment Report will include our new local assessment and WA MAP growth. The information on this slide is intended to assist in the interpretation of the performance series results, and so I would ask that you note that during 24-2015 school year, District 39 eliminated the spring administration of performance series for grades three through eight, like many other districts, due to the manner in which the first administration of Park was designed, and that would be explained to you in the later slide. Since grade two students do not participate in Park, they did not take the assessment in spring of 2015, as reflected in the following charts. So I know it's tiny, so you have a better one in front of you. This table presents the results of performance series reading. The board is being presented with the district average scale scores and the percentage of student scores, and the average or above range nationally, and the percentage of the students who have met local gains targets within the context of grade-level cohorts. So for example, the progress of our current grade-five students, class of 2021, is highlighted on the screen, and in the first row, the district average scale scores are shared from their second, third, and fourth grade years. The second row identifies the percentage of District 39 students who fall in the average and above-average range for achievement nationally, and the last row for each cohort is the percentage of students who met fall to spring locally-normed gains targets. And we introduced these gains targets in June of 2016 to provide a perspective on student progress that focuses on growth rather than attainment. And this table represents the results for performance series mathematics in the same manner as the previous slide, and so overall, for both performance series reading and mathematics, District 39 students' average scale score for each grade level is beyond the upper threshold of the national average range. District 39 students have performed well on this assessment in the past and continue to demonstrate it this year, but this will be the final report of data for performance We are also required to administer the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers (PARK) to grades three through eight students, and during the spring of 2015, Park was administered in two different sessions, once in March and once in May. And then in 2016 and 2017, it was a single session, however, there was a month differential in the two years. So during the work, I'm sorry, during the third week of September, parents did receive their child's English Language Arts, Literacy, and Mathematics Assessment Reports. And as mentioned before, on October 31st, 2017, Illinois State Board of Education publicly released all Park results. So Park describes student performance and progress toward grade-specific standards according to five levels, as displayed on this slide, and for comparison purposes, we will use levels four and five, since these are defined as the meet and exceeded This graph compares our students who fall within the level four and five to the statewide results in English Language Arts. As you can see, the percentage of District 9 students meeting or exceeding grade-specific standards is above statewide results, approximately double or more than double in some instances. These results are on par with our township districts as well. Given that this assessment was administered almost two months prior to the end of the school year, we cannot discount the percentage of students who fall within the approaching expectations, level three. So the tables in your board report, three and four, share the percentages at the other levels for you to review more specifically. This graph compares the percentage of students who fall This graph compares the percentage of students who fall within Level Four and Five to the statewide results in Mathematics. So observations made in the previous slide can also be made about math as well. District-level reports provide specific and useful information to assist the Department of Curriculum and Instruction analyze some results, and so I have some broad district-wide trends, if you will, that I wanted to share. So we analyze the Park reports for grade-specific and overall grades three through eight trends, and we were able to do that in English Language Arts, since many of the standards progressed through the grades. We can also look for trends for transferable skills in mathematics, such as the mathematical practices, and we will be engaging teachers in discussion, celebrating their efforts, and then collaborating on setting goals as well. So for English Language Arts, overall, when we look at the standard progressions for informational text, which was the emphasis of the new Illinois standards, which is great, we focused on that, and we've also shown some strength in that, point-of-view or perspective, and also theme, especially in the grades five through eight range. An area of focus would be an objective summarization, and I even reflected myself, sometimes it's hard to take an opinion out of a summary, and so for our young ones, to try to do that in an effective way is a skill that we need to build. And comparing and contrasting, when you have students who can compare, and then they can contrast, but to put it together in a cohesive essay is something that I think we can also build on. So for mathematics, obviously, our students have strengths in grade-level specific skills that are outlined, but the mathematical reasoning, which was part of our focus, when we emphasize an increase in mathematical discourse, where students are debating with one another and presenting their ideas in multiple ways, it really provided, you know, an opportunity for teachers to ask students to communicate more about their mathematical reasoning, and it really showed as a strength across the board. And so if I were to identify an area of focus, it would be, you know, taking some of these concepts that we have built so deeply, communicating relationships between two mathematical concepts. If I can give you an example, it would be that students understand area and they understand multiplication. Now they need to be able to say, how is area and multiplication intertwined and related? And that's something that we are building toward. So, and when we're reviewing our curriculum resources, we discover that, you know, this particular lesson, we need to provide some supplemental resources on. We, so we did this, this is an overview. We'd like to continue our work with that, and we're looking not just grade level, but also helping teachers investigate into some of these reports, and we're going to be starting that next week. Well, you know what I mean. Okay. If you have any questions, I am happy to.
Do board members have questions at this time?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I think the mark of a good report is it generates a lot of questions, and I have a lot of questions. So first, when we recognize that we're a very high-performing school district, we know that our numbers are going to be very high, and combining the meets and exceeds is a good summary, but I think to keep a little bit better feel on how we are doing year-to-year, and are we making improvements or changes, that we need to be able to see the number in exceeds, or, you know, separate it out, so that we can, you know, again, meets and exceeds comes out at, you know, 75%, 72%, 77%, it doesn't show a real trend. We know we're doing well, but if we can break out the exceeds, then that's something that we can talk about, whether it's worthwhile having that number improve, or whether there's any trends on that. So I think that needs to be broken out going forward.
Absolutely. The tables in your board report actually do that, but I think you mean graphically as well.
Yes.
I agree.
So, second, let's see, which one will go next? Okay, so on the Park test.
Yes.
And actually, on the Performance Series test. Last year, we identified, and you already know what I'm going to say. We identified a significant statistical difference in the test scores in almost every grade for boys versus girls in ELA. I'm looking forward to when we hear.
I actually can provide it for you now. I, that is very true. So for English Language Arts, Park score with the gender comparison, I have displayed for you what I shared last year, and then also for the last spring of 2017, and so that, that does continue to be a significant difference in the ELA Park. And then with math, we used to, prior to 2015, have some significant gender differences in mathematics as well, and as you can see, we have improved in that area.
Thank you. Just to kind of state it, because it's a lot of numbers up there, the difference, as reported in the Park postings online that we can do for our school and other schools, is 14% difference between boys and girls in ELA. Besides the fact that that's statistically significant, even without getting into statistics, that's a large percentage difference. Last year, we identified the trend. I'm hoping that relatively soon, we'll identify ideas for either saying that that's not that important, that the test doesn't really cover real life, or saying what we're going to do to try and shrink that, that delta.
Yes, thank you. I definitely understand your concern, and I make note of that.
I think I'd like to take that back to our Strategy Committee, so we can decide as a group whether that's, you know, and answer some of those questions, but yes.
And do you have the, since the Performance Series has been mothballed, grandfathered, ended, and we have a lot of longitudinal data on that, just to kind of cap it off, do you have the breakout male, female differences for Performance Series also?
Yes, I apologize if that, it's not on the screen, because that was last minute, and I just.
Right, I understand.
So if I were to just take last year's fall-to-spring progression, I can say that in a couple of grades, we've reduced over time in English Language Arts, or reading in particular, because Performance Series, but there still is a significant difference, statistical significant difference in about four grade levels, when it comes to reading and boys. And in mathematics, in for Performance Series, although we show improvement in Park, Performance Series actually identifies four grade levels as well, where the boys have outperformed the girls. And this is where I would like to take the opportunity, say that I think that the assessment style and the format of Park is more reflective of the instructional practices that we are promoting, and that it actually is showing how our work since the curriculum review, the new curriculum was rolled out, is showing some progression there.
I think, as Dr. Lechner mentioned, we'll talk more about this in Strategy, but the difference between the boys and girls in math is about one-third the difference between boys and girls in ELA, so whatever the magnitude of the issue, it's different between the two of them. Thank you.
Other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Schneiderfein.
Katie, is this the first year that we're measuring meeting growth target?
No, well, yes and no. I think last year, what we tried to do is refocus on student growth as opposed to achievement. So we went to task on Performance Series, we hired someone to do some analysis for us. We were trying to create a growth model using Performance Series data. We ran into a few roadblocks that was presented last year. One, Performance Series is not widely used as MAP is. We've got less of a population, data population. We asked Scantron, the company, to also look for like districts, so that we could not, we can stop measuring ourselves against ourselves, and measure against other high-performing districts and like districts, and we could not get that from them. Number one, their pool is less, and two, they were not accessible for the type of demographic information that we needed them to have. What MAP offers is a different perspective. They actually have, with the districts and over 10 million students taking this assessment, they already have an agreement that they have a report that they can generate based on this information, and so if we want to, we could actually submit a request for it in the spring. It will have to be in the spring, because the growth of the students are fall-to-spring, it's measured fall-to-spring, and then it will come about two months after we request that.
And so I guess I'm not familiar with how the numbers calculated, and so I don't really know how to interpret the numbers. A lot of them are in the 60s and the 70s. When I look at the chart, is that good? Is that what you were expecting? Are there surprises here? Can you just talk a little bit about that?
I'm sorry, could you point me?
When I look at Tables Two and One, we have percentages, percentage meaning.
Growth targets.
Growth targets, right.
They mean their gains, right, so.
So if I were to try to explain to you what our data consultant did, I probably would fail immensely in the details of the calculations, so if you want to help, that would be great. But taking all of our historical data, what he did was find kind of trends. So if you take, for example, a group of students who earned a specific score, and then in the spring, this is how much they grew and gained, and then there's like this average, and then he calculated about how many students fell within that range. Did I do an okay job there?
No, I think that's pretty good. I did, I actually, that was very helpful to me, because I didn't realize that that is, so that's a number that we calculated with our data consultant.
Correct.
And that, so that's based on, I've got to go off memory here, but my recollection is what we did was we said, we took seven years of growth as a function of, or gains as a function of beginning-period achievement. All right, so what did you do in the fall? And then given where you were in the fall, how much did you grow? So then we created a model out of our own seven years of historical data. By model, I mean sort of, this is what we typically did over the last seven years. And then we said, okay, and so I believe what this number represents is, okay, so how many of the students this year met what we would expect? Now, what I don't remember for sure is what our expectation level was, maybe it's as good as, I think, 75%. So that's why you see numbers close to 77, or 75%, is because that means that we're basically on par with what we've done the past seven years. So numbers that are higher than 75% means that we did a little bit better than what we've done historically, and lower means we haven't done quite as good. We do suffer from, I mean, this was a, this was sort of a best we can do, based on the data we had that we worked out last year. So, but I really appreciate you putting it into the report. I was, I was interested in it, so thank you.
So can I ask a clarifying question, then? So if you're looking at grade-two in ELA, 74% meets the gains target, so that's pretty much what they've done, according to the model, in all seven years before, right? Does it also mean that 74% of our students are meeting growth, their expected target growth?
Right, 75% of the students in that year met the expected growth that we anticipated over the course of the.
Okay, so it means two things. One, we're kind of doing like what we've done in the past, but it also means only 74% of our students met expected growth.
Yes.
And 26% of our students are not meeting expected growth. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
But, but be careful, because expected growth has a definition, which is what did 75% of our students do over those past seven years.
Okay.
So it's really saying, I might characterize it slightly differently. I would say that if you see a 74% number, then the likelihood is that you are basically the same as what has been done for the past.
Overall.
So if you want, if you want to be exactly the same, you would have 75, you would have a 75% number there.
As what you've done in the past, then. It's more a measure of what we've done in the past than how many of our students are not meeting growth.
It's a measure of how our students did this year versus how our students have done over the past seven years.
Right.
Those historical students.
Okay, okay.
In gains, though, in gains, as opposed to in performance. Right.
So we're giving you this, we know that Performance Series is going away, but we're getting you ready for the future. And that's all I'm saying. We're getting ready for that.
Do we have other questions? Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Kearney.
Based on what you just said, and that was a really nice explanation, Mark, the seven-year average, because I had no clue how to follow that, but what you, let's just say, and this could be a silly question right now, but we can, we start to see like 80%, 70, you know, well above 75%. At what point do we go back and make that average, or like what the expect?
Yeah, do you recall anything?
So now we, with MAP, we're going to get the opportunity to do something we couldn't do before, and that's compare ourselves to like districts.
So.
Right, so it's going to be much better.
That's not what I was asking, though. It's all right. Do you understand what I was saying?
I do. I think the, at least the way we were talking about it last year is that we were going to take a rolling seven-year average. That said, I'll echo what Dr. Lechner said, which is, you know, if I have my druthers, I would prefer to compare ourselves to other districts that we will now be able to do, as opposed to what's, you know, I'm extremely happy that we're doing this, but this is a kind of ad hoc measure.
The reason I, I want, I want to compare to other districts as well, but I wanted to not just accept what we've, as we continue to increase, we should, you know, roll with that seven-year average. So just because we're like beating every other district, like that's, you know, acceptable if we have the potential to go. I'm just, the sky's the limit. Two more questions, and these are just like understanding the charts. One, for me, I would have liked to have seen 15 and 16 Park results next to the bars, just to see how we're handling Park, if that's even.
Over time?
Yes.
I can't provide it for you, it's really tiny.
Was that inter?
No, again, I, these were all like some last-minute ads for, but I can, you can see kind of an overall trend of our results for ELA over the three years, but I just want to echo again how the 2015, the spring 2015 assessment was very different than where we're moving forward, and then the 2016 was a month earlier than, you know, a month later than what we took last year. So looking at that, and I have for you a District 39 ELA, and then a Illinois kind of trend, if you will.
So obviously, the reason you're mentioning that, if I just looked at that chart without having the information you just gave me, I'd say, oh, my gosh, we're declining year-over-year in Park, but there's different, there's things to consider, like timing and the change of the test.
Correct.
So it's not a direct correlation.
Right. I'm hopeful that it will stabilize at some point. The other thing, too, that I noticed as a conclusion was that Illinois, just in general, had a dip, and we seemed to follow suit. So I don't know what's going.
I can tell you that Park has changed three times. And this is, the spring is the last time that Park is going to be administered, and there'll be a new test. So this history, we're not there.
Right. Just making sure I understand what's going on. And then also, another question like that as well, I just want to confirm, so yeah, I understand that we're replacing with MAP, which is a wonderful thing. Will that still be administered three times a year?
Yes.
Okay.
Other board members' questions? Mr. Sizeretti, it looks like you're ready to go.
I'm going to ask the basic, I'm not, I'm somewhat familiar with the history here, but I think, I think maybe I would benefit by a little more history. So my understanding is that, so Park is going away? No, yes. MAP is coming in, and it's better, because it'll be less time, and we can use it to compare our results with other districts.
Not the less time part with MAP, but we will now be able to have a cohort group like District 39, instead of comparing ourselves to ourselves forever, and then that's not good.
Right. Right, agreed.
Thank you.
I was just curious, I understand there's many, many problems with Park. Did the results inform instruction at all in the classroom? Did it help our kids?
It does, it does give us a progress toward the standards, but MAP does the same thing.
It does, it does give us a progress toward the standards, but MAP does the same thing. They, they both did, uh, correlation study with one another. So what we would find out within MAP would also be on par with park.
But I, I need to emphasize that we get the results the year after. There's nothing that drives instruction in the classroom. What it did give us, and Katie did this a little bit, is it gives you some big picture areas where our curriculum could be enhanced, PARK does, versus MAP, which is more immediate. The feedback is more immediate.
So, so just to reiterate, we're, we're doing PARK one more year?
Yeah, the last administration of PARK will be this spring. And then the state is looking at going out and finding a different test.
And will it be shorter, given the return of, how much the kids are being pulled out of the classroom?
Yeah, I can't tell you that. I know that I've been advocating for a less time test. I have been advocating for that.
Hang on just a second, we've got another comment from, oh, a comment from Ms. Chaff, okay.
Well, I just want to get back to the growth thing with Performance Series. It seems like it's not been a very satisfactory marker for, uh, creating a growth, um, range for our students to see if they've really grown academically.
Right.
And up to par. Will MAP be more act, because we compare it with a lot of other districts, there's a lot more data out there, will actually be able to say, okay, seventy-five percent of our students did meet growth in these areas?
Yes, if I could, if I had a whiteboard, I would draw you kind of a four-square, um, something that, uh, we've been talking a lot about. We want to be able to identify high achieving, achievement, high growth, high achievement, low growth, low achievement, high growth, and so on. And, um, at the, right now, the MAP platform at the classroom level is able to do that. So when we have more than one data point, it will identify that for us. So soon I will be meeting with the programmer for our new data warehouse, and I'm going to show him that and say, this is what we'd like. Could you recreate that for us on ours? And my hope is that the answer is yes. I don't know yet, um, but, um, I'm going to engage in that conversation so that we could have more of a district picture.
So I want to just reiterate what she just said. What she wants to do is take what's available to the individual classroom teacher and then give us district data, present it in the same way.
Right, okay. But I was going to say, because one of my questions about Performance Series was going to be, okay, if seventy-four percent of your children are meeting, uh, growth targets, that means twenty-six percent aren't, where are those students and exactly how they fall out into the, into the quadrants? And I sort of, in, what I'm hearing you say is that Performance Series really can't give us that exactly, and we're going to have much better data next year.
Yes, definitely at the classroom level, I'm hopeful for the district level.
Thank you.
Mr. Pantica?
Just, just two clarifications. Uh, one, um, Tracy, on the, um, website, the Illinois scorecards for districts, does have all three years of PARK scores for us and other districts? And, um, second, uh, I just wanted to reiterate that, um, I am also looking forward to what it sounds like you will have, or hopefully will have, which is a picture of grid that for, you know, high, medium, and low achieving, whether they, um, met or, um, underdid or exceeded their growth targets.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, and Ms. Kearney?
I just have a question, Aunt Larry, for right. Dr. Lechner, uh, okay, I understand that PARK is, the contract's up next year. Is there something you know for sure? I know you were just in DC talking to somebody.
Yeah, we're still working on getting the state of Illinois. Um, I'm, I'm happy to say that I've been being used as part of a group of superintendents that are consulting them on the, and our next meeting is coming up. I don't have it established yet, but we're still working with them. We're identifying a handful of standards that we must, we're, we're seeking. It needs to be a growth tool, it needs to be shorter, it needs to be meaningful, you know, it's all the good things that superintendents want a test to, and also getting data back quickly.
So the way I understand it, I'm all for letting go of PARK.
Right.
So let's just be clear on that. But, um, the way I understand it is we know for sure the contract's ending. We don't know for sure that we'll never have PARK again, but that's what we highly suspect.
We know that PARK as a company is going away.
Oh, great. That's what I.
Mrs. Schneider-Fapes, did you have another comment?
Katie, how long does it, will it take, um, from the testing date, when the kids are taking MAP, to when the teachers can actually have data that can help them with the individual students?
The next day. Great. Right, um, so as soon as, uh, oh, so let, let me rephrase that. When the assessment window closes, when we close the assessment window, then the data will be available to all of the teachers. Because what we do is we provide a span of weeks that the teachers can schedule and, um, provide that assessment for the students. And so some might be in kind of towards the front and middle and end. So when the assessment window closes, they will have access to it.
And does your office provide support to the teachers to interpret the data and figure out where to go from here?
We are on this journey together. Um, I have some wonderful colleagues that have a lot of information that I'm learning from. I'm learning a lot as well. But yes, our plan is the next time, um, you know, explain the reports that are provided, how to use it. So this is a learning year for us.
Other questions? I think I had two relatively quick ones. First of all, thank you again for the, for the, just including growth data that allows us to start having these questions about gains. I think that's a wonderful step forward. Quick question on the chart that you put up with the, the, uh, male versus female differences. I just want to make sure I'm reading that correctly. The sort of salmon-colored grades, those are the ones that fall in the P less than point oh oh one, or P less than point oh five, is that correct?
Correct.
Wow. There's a big difference between males and females in the, there is absolutely, absolutely no question that there's a difference between males and females if that little color is salmon. And for, uh, for the ELA, that's grades four through eight, uh, for the past two years and, or three years, and, uh, grade three before that, so.
So ELA would be interpreted as about ninety-nine point nine percent assured, assurance that there is a difference, and then the point zero five is about ninety-five percent that there is a difference.
And that's on each individual a year, right?
Correct.
So when you aggregate it, there's just, it's, it's hard to deny. Uh, it would be silly to deny. The other question that I had was, uh, uh, actually building on Ms. Chaff's question, we, you know, last year, we sort of were working on this chart that you talked about, right? Did you, did you make an attempt to make any of those charts for any of the grades here to sort of say, is there a trend of where we're missing, where people aren't hitting the gains, whether they're at the high end or the low end or the middle of the, um, achievement?
Sure.
Axis?
Right, so we're poised to do that with MAP, and since we only have one data point, I didn't know that I should try to do this with PARK because it's year to year. But upon winter, um, we will have that information automatically through the platform and then in spring as well.
I think that's terrific. Thank you very much. Thank you for all of your work on this. I appreciate it, and we're looking forward to the improved testing standards. Thanks to Ray for working on that. All right. The next report is our long-term enrollment projections.
This one is actually a brief report that I usually give at my seat, but since I'm going to be doing the next two reports, I thought I might also stand up here and, uh, present. Okay, um, let's get right into it. This here is the bottom line. Uh, the key is that District Student, District 39 student population has been pretty much consistent for the past decade. As we do each year, our projections project a decline for the next five years. However, each year we predict a decline and each year we find that we have stable enrollment. And this is the basis, I'm not going to show you every slide, I'm just going to show you a couple of them because you have a full report of them. But, uh, this one here is the kindergarten enrollment, and you see there's a birth rate in the, the middle, and then you can see the enrollment in kindergarten has been declining over the years. But then you see the move-in rate is going up. Okay? So that's our, yeah.
Sorry, just to understand this slide, so the, the birth rate is the birth rates?
Will met, District 39.
Will met, District 39 birth rate that we know.
Yes.
And then you're, you're getting to the move-ins by subtracting?
Yes.
Okay.
That's exactly right. Okay? Yeah. So then, um, what we look is our, at our year, once the kids are in kindergarten, we look at our annual year-over-year increase. And this is known as what we call the retention rate. So for each of our student cohorts, we look at changes as they move through the grades, and consistently kindergarten is at least a hundred and fifteen percent from kindergarten to first grade, every single year. And that gets back to our long-range plan to look at kindergarten enrichment options that parents choose to use in the community. And then in the other grades, it goes from a hundred to a hundred and five percent. So that's it in a nutshell that, there, but overall, we keep getting back to this. So you have the, the projections for each of the schools and the district moving forward, um, but we continue to have district enrollment that's stable. Oh, I'm going backwards, sorry about that. I wanted to show you, this is our enrollment projections. Okay, so once again, as we do each year, there, it appears that the enrollment projections are decreasing slightly. K-four seems solid, the upper grades would go down. We had a big couple bubbles that are going through the high crests and the junior high that may be going away in the future, but K-four is pretty solid. So we continue to project that our enrollment will be stable. And now we can have questions about that report.
Any questions from board members? I just have one quick question, which is, do you have any sense, you know, we have 2022 is, uh, thirty-two-hundred-and-ninety-four students, let's call it thirty-three-hundred. If you had to place a bet on what are the chances that it's, you know, above thirty-four-hundred?
I'm going to guess that it is going to be over thirty-four-hundred. Even if we actually achieved that goal, the goal, it's not a goal, even if we achieved that result, uh, that would be about thirty-one kids per grade level, so it's still not significant in terms of our programs at that point in time. But I'm pretty sure it, it's not going to happen because it hasn't.
Okay, so in other words, we've predicted this kind of trend for a long time and it still hasn't happened.
That's correct.
So our level of confidence, it's important we do the projections, but our level of confidence is not particularly.
That is correct.
Great. Any other questions? Uh, I, sorry, I created a question, I apologize. Go ahead.
The same question. No, so, so there's these last two charts.
Uh huh.
That show a decline in enrollment. I think you've said it twice now, but we don't believe these charts, basically.
Well, we had some big, huge increases in, in enrollments at high crest and junior high. So that's like the, the, it's like a snake, you know, that's eating, right? So, so we do expect some decrease at high crest and junior high, but we have this solidly stable K-four, uh, population that's moving up. And then we also know that we get move-ins, especially in fifth grade.
Okay, any other questions now? Yep, no? Okay, great. Next report is the levy update, what we've all been waiting for.
Yes. This was an, actually a very good process. The last time we did something like this was when we did the referendum in 2011. And, um, but we're going to give you some information. You have a very comprehensive report. This is going to be at a much higher level, so you have all the details that you need in your reports. And we're going to just do a quick summary about how the levy process works. And as we've said before and over again, we're asking for a dollar amount. It's not a, a specific percent tax increase that we're asking for. Because oftentimes, uh, community members say, oh my gosh, I saw something that said four percent, that means my taxes are going up four percent. But that's not, that's not the case, and we're going to go, go in deeper about that. The other thing is that, uh, the, the levy is basically about, uh, the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, plus new construction. Those two are very important to understand the differences because new construction does not apply to the average taxpayer. We'll get into that. Percentage increase in a property owner's tax bill is not based on the percentage increase in the levy. And once, I kind of said that already, if the ultimate levy goes up X percent, that does not mean that applies to the individual taxpayer. And then what we do know is that the major component of change in individual tax bill is actually the, the tax, the property's tax value itself. Cook County establishes, uh, the tax, you know, the, the, the valuation of the individual property taxes, or EAV, and that then is a driver of that. But we're going to get into this a little more. It's kind of important to talk about our philosophy since 2011. The community approved a referendum. They approved a referen-, so that is the starting place of this conversation. Because if you look at information before 2011, and you say, oh my gosh, the taxes have gone up this much, but that's, you're, you're including a part that was already approved by the community. Analysis begins with 2011. And at that time, we'd cut four-point-three million dollars out of our budget before we even went to a referendum, because our goal was to ask the, for the community as little as possible. And what we found is that we were still in deficit spending. We would have to take additional, uh, program cuts if we didn't get additional funding over six million dollars. The board voted to put a referendum on the ballot, which passed, we're thankful for that. And then since that, uh, 2011, the focus of my report tonight is that we focus on living within our means as much as possible by edu-, by financial efficiencies, monitoring our spending. It doesn't mean that we can't, that we don't always deficit spend, because, you know, sometimes our expenses are more than even our, our controlled, uh, expenses. Here's evidence that we do that. This was a really critical, uh, chart that we did in the, the 2011 referendum, and our ranking is about the same. We're right near the bottom of all of our comparable districts in terms of our operating cost per pupil. So in one respect, I'm proud of that. Okay, and then we're going to talk about the district's, uh, financial philosophy since 2011. And there are four guiding financial principles. We're going to dig into these a little bit deeper. But the first one is to obviously maintain or improve our excellence while living within our means. The second was setting up a fund balance of thirty percent of total operating expenditures. We heard a little bit about that this evening from some members of the audience, we can talk about that. But also we budget conservatively, we taking into account some of the state funding limitations that we've been hearing about, like property tax freezes. At one point, we were threatening to lose two million dollars' worth of income into our budgets, and we budgeted for that. And also, once again, connecting expenses to revenues as much as possible. So we'll begin with maintaining or improving educational excellence while living within our financial means. So we talked about the referendum already, that was approved by sixty-three percent of our, uh, community. The board targeted at that time that we would be able to survive on that for five years. That goal has been achieved and well surpassed. But here's something that people talk about, what were some of the outcomes you got out of some of those resources? We have a new junior high science wing. We have renovated libraries in five of, six of our schools. We have a one-to-one mobile learning program. We have expanded foreign language offerings like Mandarin. We added an early childhood addition to Ramona Elementary School. And we have been doing maintenance, replacing boilers that were fifty-nine years old. Those are pretty amazing outcomes that we have che-, achieved since 2011. So once again, thank you to the community for approving that referendum. Next, we talked about setting a minimum fund balance of thirty percent. And that is exactly right. There was a resolution right before the referendum, we were trying to keep the ask as low as possible. And a thirty percent fund balance is what we, we, we came to as a, a place or a target that we were going to focus on. Now, we know that fund balances in other districts, all through the township, are fifty percent or greater. That is their, their fund balance board-approved target. And what we also know is that fund balances below twenty-five percent actually get you on the financial watch list. Also, you, it affects your bond rating. So we have a twenty-five percent, uh, concern about the, uh, financial watch list, we're at thirty percent. Part of my presentation was not to ask you to increase the thirty percent fund balance, but I know some people have suggested that. And the other part is that the board is committed to a gradual decline to a target level, as opposed to a quickly crash and burn, which we were facing in 2011. But actually, as we look at our deficit spending, that we take it very gradually and slowly so we can better manage our future. Next is to budget conservatively, conservatively, to flexibly, flexibly react to legislation. So the last couple of years, we have been looking at Springfield, every time there was a, a bill that was actually approved or impending status or something like that, we built those into our budget projections because we were going to be conservative. That includes a pension cost shift, property tax freezes, um, and then at times added each year when the adversity didn't, uh, happen, we were able to take advantage of that and of that and help, help, you know, we had some higher fund balances, but then we also used that to pay for some of our capital projects. And we also have been revising recently our assumptions because now that we have an actual school funding program and that we have a balanced, not balanced, we have a state budget, period, we know that some of the assumptions have changed. So right now, the things that we're worried about in terms of budgeting, our Senate Bill eight fifty-one, Ms. Kearney did a nice job summarizing that this evening, but that is still on the table and a possibility. And then everybody keeps talking about the possibility of pension cost shifts. So we, you know, we continue to look at those as part of our budgeting process. And finally, we have to create a relationship between expenses and revenues. And again, we heard a nice report from the audience earlier this evening. In two thousand and eleven, before that, our fund balances were declining very quickly. What's interesting, though, is that both two thousand and eleven and two thousand and seventeen, eighty-four percent of our revenues continued to be local property taxes. There hasn't been a spike up in terms of using more local property taxes for our overall funding. And then also, as indicated earlier, since the referendum, salaries of all employees are tied to CPI in some way, using a CPI formula. And again, this is a direct effort to tie our expenditures to our revenues. So here's something that's kind of interesting. This is District Thirty-nine salaries and benefits, total salaries and benefits from two thousand and eleven, twelve to today, thirteen percent increase, which is an average of two-point-two-eight percent per year. So now we have to talk about the levy decision that the board's going to start, you know, considering. Clearly, the board needs to balance the needs of students against the interests of taxpayers, absolutely. Also, our past levy practice does include CPI and also new construction. So I want to differentiate these two once again. So CPI increases spread proportionately based on individual property value. And then new construction is not spread among all homeowners. Rather, that's for those that are building new homes and have permits, they would get that, that portion comes out of their pockets. We also, again, talk about the uncertainty of pending legislation and then also changing our past levy practices. If we do change our past levy practices, then it's going to limit our revenue increases, resulting actually in a faster fund decline. And we're going to show you a little bit about that. So I want to start by keeping it pretty simple. So let's assume that we have a one-thousand-dollar tax bill. I know that nobody has that, but this will help you do math really easy. You can multiply by five or by ten. So in two thousand and eleven, you can see what the CPI was. What people also need to remember is that like thirty-seven percent of the entire tax bill is District Thirty-nine. Yes, we're the number one taxing group, but it's thirty-seven percent. So if you take a thousand dollars and you apply thirty-seven percent, that means that of that thousand dollars, three-hundred-and-seventy-seven goes to District Thirty-nine, okay? Inflation in that year was one-point-five percent, so the tax increase to the homeowner was five dollars and sixty-six cents. And then you can see that same thing applied all the way down. So then in two thousand and seventeen, CPI is two-point-one percent, all right, on a thousand dollars. This year, it's thirty-six-point-six percent is the percentage of our, of your bill, your tax bill towards District Thirty-nine, three-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. Two-point-one percent increase is seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. We're talking about seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. But I know that your tax bill is not a thousand dollars. So let's look at a fifteen-thousand-dollar property tax bill. That would increase your taxes by a hundred and fifteen dollars. So what if you see a bigger increase? I know, I remember after the referendum, like, you told me it would be this, and it's so much more. And then we sat, I sat down with individual taxpayers and went through their tax bill. And what we found over and over again is because the property value increased. It increased due to the reassessment by Cook County or maybe a loss of exemption at times. And then also, when anybody else's property value decreases, that decrease has to be shared across the whole community. So if there was a tax appeal or an exemption or something like that, that would affect it. But with those things being constant, if you pay fifteen-thousand dollars in property taxes, your increase for the whole year would be one-fifteen, then divided by the two payments, however that is divided. Okay, so now, this is our current practice. So these are our projections based on our current levy practice. This is without using our past practice, okay? And once again, you'll see that it declines over time, but that declines because of deficit spending, all right? And you'll see that it's kind of gradual. When you see the future slides, you're going to see it not so gradual. Let's talk about what the assumptions that went into this budget of this, excuse me, this fiscal forecast. So in two thousand and seventeen, we know that CPI is two-point-one percent. Then we use like Bloomberg's estimates moving forward. New property growth estimate, which is not, which gets levy to all the taxpayers, but just the ones that are building big new homes, those are added dollars to our budget, and we're basing it on a twelve-year historical average are built into this. So that includes, this also includes thirteen-point-six million in capital projects. So the FDC Committee, thank you, Alice, has been working really hard to organize actually a twenty-year plan of projects so we can look way down the road of the projects that we need to improve our schools or even just to maintain them. But in the next five years, we have thirteen-point-six million dollars in capital projects that we would like to do. That also includes, in addition to that, health, life, safety projects of two-point-two million, again, over five years. All of this is built into this projection right here. That's our current practice. If you were to levy, as you did in the past, this is what our experience we would project. Now, in this, in this scenario, we're going to assume that you approve the CPI increase as you have in the past. So we start with the baseline forecast, and then we have the property tax freeze for two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen. And you can see that with Senate Bill eight fifty-one, it's, the slope goes a little faster than under the CPI, under the traditional model. So now, let's say that we decide that we're not going to do a CPI increase in this year. We're going to freeze the taxes this year, and then the state goes ahead and does the same thing in the next two years. And you can see what it does to our fund balances, below thirty percent. So in fiscal year twenty, we're okay, and twenty-one, we're, we were already below where our board projected. Okay, that's it in a nutshell. Any comments or questions?
I suspect, suspect we have some.
And if I don't have all the answers, Gail is going to help, or one of you might help.
Anybody would like to go first? Anybody have any questions?
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, great report, Dr. Lecter. A couple of questions, and I was writing quickly. Okay, first, can you bring up?
Sure.
The freeze, or first, with, as we are now.
The baseline?
Yeah.
It's a current practice, right.
My first question is, do we have all of the HMS?
Yes. Every high crest.
Other four or five.
There are four phases.
Four phases. All of the high crest phases are budgeted to that.
That's correct.
So, and we have an estimate of the total phase, total cost of all high crest phases being around thirteen million or nine million? I don't remember. The numbers changed.
Yeah, do you remember if it was thirteen-point-six million only high crest or it was other projects too?
All right. All the projects.
Right, how much was high crest is her question of that? Do you know offhand?
So, correct. Okay, so should we do the five million, assuming we go with air conditioning?
Right.
No matter what? And just to reiterate that each phase, we went out of our way not to make them codependent on each other?
That's an excellent point. We did the high crest in four phases, which they're independent, discreet, mutually exclusive. So at any point, the board could pull back if something.
So we potentially have the opportunity?
Yes.
Should the sky fall, like we're saying, anticipating if there was a property tax freeze for two years given by the state, and if we did not levy this year, extend the levy this year, we would have the opportunity to not spend ten million dollars should we choose to? Fifteen million's budgeted, five-point-something is for high crest.
Correct.
Okay, that's just, great. I wanted you to answer that question because I want to make sure. So then go to the next slide, please.
Okay, slide number two. This is with.
Eighteen Navit.
Eighteen, nineteen is when we'd have the freeze, not in seventeen.
Right.
So we would levy as we normally do this year.
Right. Go to the third one, then.
Oops, that wasn't the one.
This is with freeze, not extending now.
Three years of freeze.
Again, not taking into consideration that any cuts in this forecast could be made, like the ten million I just referred to.
That is correct.
Okay.
But I want to point out that when we spread out the cost of high crest, it went all the way out to two thousand and twenty-six. And in this chart, this only goes out to two thousand and twenty-three, so it does.
So how many phases were predicted up to, out to twenty-three?
I think probably three.
So we could knock two out, which I think the second one was, was the learning commons. And do you have any idea what that amount was? I think we're at about six million in the second and third phase.
Tracy, if you go to page seven of this whole report, it lists capital spending.
What report are you on?
I'm on the whole levy report, the big levy.
The middle, the second report?
Go to the, go to page.
Report number two, report number one, or report number three.
Yeah, it's in the report number three, page seven, sorry.
All right.
It lists thirteen-point-six million in capital projects, but it only has three of the phases of high crest in it. Five-point-two for the, what we're supposed to, the phase one. Plus, one-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand for the fire alarm system is spelled out separately. Then the learning commons is phase two, three-point-four million. And then the drama, special ed, art renovation is one-point-nine million approximately.
So about six million after phase one could be technically taken out of this, or we could ask the community and go to referendum to make that difference.
Approximately for five million.
All right, five million.
Yeah.
Or we could go to referendum. There's always the option to ask. That was my first question. I just wanted to clarify that, that what was in that bill. As far as Senate Bill eight fifty-one, from what I understand, and I too am concerned about the pension cost shift, and I'll just say, I too think it should be at the local level where accountability is in play. But should that occur after we cut, after, even if there was a property tax freeze, as mentioned, and again, legislation can change, I know that, but currently, what's on the table, they did note that the, you would be able to continue the levy, extending the levy for pension costs, and what was the other part of it? Thank you, in debt.
Right.
Debt payments.
We're not levying more debt, so that wouldn't affect us.
I know, I understand that, but it leaves that option on the table as far as the current legislation that is, as usual, again, we keep predicting property tax legislation that continues to fail. But if it were to pass, like they're saying in two thousand and eighteen, they've made that exemption part, that should there be a property tax freeze, debt payments and pension cost obligation would be exempt from that property tax freeze. In other words, five percent, we can still levy.
Up two, it's CPI, or five percent. So CPI's been so low lately. And our, our TRS is so de minimis, this would be not, this would be pennies.
No, I, correct. I'm just, I'm clarifying that. So based on what people say too, that that's, they're, why some people don't, some part of the aisle does not like that legislation as well, is actually because that opens the door, not that we would do that, Dr. Lecter, but opens the door to, yes, borrow more money in order to extend the levy to the highest amount that we can. So that I just wanted to clarify as well. And then we continue to talk about, and I've been extremely supportive of, year over year, building those assumptions into our budgets, even though they don't happen. But at the same time, we, we kind of cry, the sky may fall, and make that conservative assumption, as we should, but as soon as it doesn't happen, we go spend the money.
On things that we really need.
Well, that's, that's subjective. But anyway, that's, I want to also say that. So when we continue to say, but if this happens, if this happens, if this happens, we'll go, I would just want to note that we have spent the money.
We've spent it on one-time expenditures. It's not like increasing a program that you're stuck.
I'm not saying that's right or wrong. I'm just saying that that's what's happened, okay? And then, that's all I've got for right now.
Okay.
Okay, do we have other questions? Comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Francika.
Partly going back to page twelve, on report three. One, one of the things that, that pops out to me on this slide is that the assumptions that are being made here were different than the assumptions during the two thousand and eleven levy, or not referendum. One of the, one of the points then is that we would have more complete control of our destiny and that we could have a smoother ramp and going near the line, going thirty percent as even a recognized number, where twenty-five percent is when our ratings decline was something that was within mostly our control. It seems like what's different today is that with the state finance issues and the proposals that are being floated continuously, that if any of those happen, that those are not in our control. And from a year-to-year basis, if, if, you know, this chart, we look at it, it would, this chart would say that with our current practice, that in two years, we would have to go to a referendum. And if it did not pass, the next year, we would have to take ten percent out of our budget. So that, that's a different assumption than, than we've had in the past. The earlier five-year budget that we've been working on for quite some time with a smoother trajectory still tries to leave us that kind of room. In this kind of a proposal, party back to what Tracy is saying, but if you look at the numbers, basically, we would have to probably postpone the entire high crest thing because as soon as we get one phase into it, we're, we start going down this path because it's only in two years that we'd fall off the table. So it gets very complicated. There are very few levers that are as large as the revenue that we're talking about here. And I think in the next finance meeting, we need to delve deeper into exactly what would be, what would have to be tied to the consequence of reducing the levy. I mean, whatever we decide, one way we decide, and we say, we still have options, we can decide whether to spend money on some of these projects. If we decide as a, as a board to not do the levy, then I think we have to, at the same time, decide what we're not going to do, or we'll run into this problem. And I don't think this is a problem that we can.
That's a pair request.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I agree with Frank, and I think I will restate what you said because I'm enjoying doing that. I think what Frank's saying is that the budget is the levy, right? And we have budgeted in this high crest major improvement, which I understand is needed, and we all agree that it's needed. But we can always cut it. And, and that's, that's really a decision we're making, is are we going to cut it or not? Are we going to fund this improvement out of these operating revenues and this, I think, new construction revenues, frankly? Because we're raising everybody else's taxes by CPI. And, and to me, that's what the decision comes down to.
That's a board decision.
Thanks, Frank.
I want to add, if I can.
Go ahead.
Somebody in the audience asked a great question about pension spiking, and I can't wait to give that report next month. But I do want to say that those are not built into here because there are no projections that include pension spiking in here because we absolutely can't predict that. That is, the things that happen were completely out of our control, and we're going to show that next month. It's really exciting.
Okay, great. I, I want to clarify something. I've heard it said that our budget is fully funded next year. Now, I know we don't have a budget next year yet, that's later in the process. But I don't know exactly what people mean by that, but I want to be clear. Are our revenues or our expenses greater in our projections?
I'm going to back you up to our baseline forecast, and you'll see that we are stepping down. That means that our expenditures are greater than our revenues.
So we are expecting to deficit spend every year for the next, whatever this is, five, six years, as, as our baseline projection. We are expecting we will have more expenditures than we have revenue. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to comment?
I did, sorry. I came, I remembered three things. And maybe, I know there's five board members, previous board members who did the audience. If I don't remember, you don't remember when this was. When was the year that the referendum failed? Was that nineteen ninety-three or five?
It was in the mid to late nineties, I remember.
Okay, I just want to make that comment ahead of, one of the constituents who stood up, who was also a previous board member, talked about how the year that the board voted not to extend the levy did follow a year that a referendum did not pass. Entirely a different situation than where we are. I also want to say, there were a lot of community members that said in two thousand and eleven, we voted. Um. "We voted. Um, that's what we wanted. The economy and the political climate and the situation in Illinois is entirely different in 2016." Um, again, not saying, going either way on that, just making that comment. That's part of the story.
We were in the middle of a recession in 2011.
Yeah, but we have a tax, taxes are higher. Um, median incomes aren't growing as fast, and people are leaving the state, just to name a few. Thirdly, uh, when we say that this, we continue to forget that we can always ask the community if we need more funding. And then finally, the question, I forgot. Thank you. Good enough.
Other board members? I actually have a question for you, Ms. Kenny. You, you mentioned that, uh, your portrayal was that when we have, when we've planned for eventualities that don't occur, then we go and spend that money. Dr. Lekner said, "We do it on things that are necessary." You've been a part of the board for two and a half years. What should we not have spent money on, on those? What are the specific projects that you don't think-
I didn't say anything in particular if, um, I said-
No, but I'm asking. You said, so I'm just wondering, is there anything that you think we shouldn't have spent money on?
Um, well, I was not a big proponent of the Learning Commons and how quickly they, us accelerating it. And when I brought that up the first time, I was the no vote on it. But like the commitment I've made to the board and recognize that that's the way the board was going, and didn't hear anything from the community objecting to the Learning Commons, I followed that lead.
So you would have preferred to not accelerate the Learning Commons?
In this climate, absolutely.
But still presumably spend money on it eventually, is that?
I can't answer that question.
Fair enough.
Because we're not in that situ-, you know?
Okay.
It's hindsight.
Yep. Uh, fair enough. And then I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, um, this. We, so we've got the, uh, scenarios on page eight. It looks to me like it's, if we could do a one-year freeze, that's about 5 million, which is, uh, pretty much equal to the Phase One cost for, uh, HMS, which is what, uh, Mr. Cesaretti said. The cost, if there is a two-year freeze, is around 11 and a half million. Uh, we're already deficit spending, and so we would have to, i- i- it would, it would not be sufficient to cut out High Crest to, to do that. We would, we would go down much faster in that case. Is that?
High Crest the next five years is 13 million, is that right? So we would pretty much be, no.
13 million.
How much is? Oh, all-in is 13, got it.
Yeah, I think High Crest is about, uh, yeah, it's about the same. And then if we were to freeze our own taxes this year and then get a, freeze on top of that, that would be around 17 million in revenue that we would not see from the baseline pa- plan over the next five years. And so then we would not only have to cut High Crest, but find a lot of other ways to cut in a deficit spending budget. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I think that's, those were the questions I had. Do other board members have other questions or comments? Great, seeing none?
Wait, I just-
Oh, sorry.
Oh, go on.
Ms. Schneider, sorry, go ahead.
You know, I just want to say, I appreciate the principles by which this district operates. And I also appreciate the very serious discussion and consideration that we're having around whether or not to raise the levy. Um, I don't think that any board member takes this decision lightly. Um, and I also think that we're stewards of the district. And so when we talk about what the district needs, we're not all going to agree. But I do want to reiterate that we all do care and agree on being good fiscal stewards. So I think we have to kind of all operate in this discussion with that in mind. The other thing I want to say is that when we talk about need, we all want and agree that District 39 needs to be a great district, to remain a high-performing district. And as part of being a high-performing district, you have to constantly innovate and change. And, and that isn't free. And I also think that in many ways, you pay now or pay later. So that you can do gradual levy increases over time, or pay a lot more in a faster referendum, right? Where, um, the other thing, pay now, pay, pay now or pay later. When it comes to capital improvements of our buildings, you defer it, and then it ends up costing you more. So I just want to, when we think about what we need as a district and whether or not we need this levy, it's a nuanced conversation that we all need to do some serious reflection. And then I do believe we are doing that.
Thank you for that comment. Other comments?
Agreed.
Great, I think-
Well, I would agree too, and I would say, actually, uh, just putting together this report has been a great exercise. So, uh, no matter how we end up on the subject, you know, the vote in December, I think actually taking a step back, what this process has done is force us to take a step back and to look at how we levy, why we levy, what our principles have been, and it's caused all of us to be more thoughtful about the process.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Great, I missed it before, so I think we're okay now. Thank, thank you very much, uh, for that levy update. And now we move on to board policy review. And, uh, do you want to go ahead and take this?
Yes, these are the next set of policies presented for first reading this evening in consultation with Katie Lee, Denise Thrasher, Heather Guwacki, and the attorneys. We believe these revisions reflect our current practice as well as legal requirements. Uh, you'll note several of the policies have recommended, uh, title changes. Uh, questions and suggestions regarding revisions will be addressed at the second meeting. We've gotten some feedback already, but we're taking more.
Any questions or comments on that, uh, on any of the first read policies?
I gave Heather some comments via email today. If people want to hear them, we can go over them, but otherwise Heather can work them into, uh, the first read and then send them all out to us. If that's okay.
Yes, and what Heather's going to do for the next read is actually put those recommendations that you made in a document. So you'll get to see what everybody's suggestions were, and then the final outcome.
And I think just as a notice to the board, uh, Ms. Turnweiler told me earlier today that she had a couple of, uh, suggestions that she had mentioned as well. So we'll, we'll see that from at least two board members.
So I just, a quick point of process. Is now the time to ask clarifying questions, or is that second read?
No, now's good.
Okay, so I had a question on, um, 6120. It talks about procedural safeguards for kids with 504s. And, um, do we have them already? It says, the policy says we shall establish them, and I, I would have assumed that we've, we've got those.
Yeah, that's just language saying, "We have to establish them." It's a, we shall, we, we're required to have them, but we definitely have them. It doesn't imply that we don't have them. It means that we need to have them.
It's a legal term that means you must.
Any other questions or comments on the first read policies? One, uh, note that I want to make especially for the public is, uh, the policy 2:230, which we're reviewing. That is what I mentioned earlier in the meeting, where we are going to, um, we're suggesting, at least in our policy, that we will change the way we do the public comment period briefly, uh, and, and you should read the policy for more information, but briefly, we will bring our, uh, comments down to about three minutes per person. And I was very happy to note that that was the average tonight. Um, also, we will change the policy so that, uh, people will get up, uh, one, it's a little bit complicated, but you can get up at the first public comment, uh, period and speak for three minutes. If you get up again in the second comment period, you only have one minute. Uh, that's an effort to make sure that we distribute the comments to anybody who wants to have comments. We are taking out the 15-minute, um, suggested or potential present, um, uh, subject matter limitation. So we're making a couple of comments like that, which we hope will, uh, make the public comment period more effective for everyone. I mention this in particular because we are, uh, go, we intend to go ahead and do our second read at the beginning of the December meeting, which we would then take an action item and vote on immediately, and that means that those, uh, policies would be in place for December. So, uh, just wanted to make sure that that was out there as public knowledge. Any other comments on that? Okay. I should mention, we, we discussed that as a, as a total committee on Thursday, and I think we all agreed that that was the right way to go. So that's one reason why I expect that we'll be, uh, passing that in the beginning of the December meeting, but that's why we hold votes, is to see. Uh, this brings us to the second public comment period of this meeting, again, under the still existing rules. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment at this time? Again, please state your name and your community of residence.
Now it's on, right? All right. My name is Karen Donan, and I am a Willmet taxpayer. First off, I want to start by recognizing the school board members. As a former school board member, I really appreciate everyone's service to the community, and it's sometimes a thankless job to, um, for doing this, so thank you. I'm here really tonight in, speaking in, in, in support of the levy. My children attended District 39 during the 1990s, and so I live through what happens when, uh, the levy doesn't happen and a referendum fails. I can speak to what happens to your class sizes because it's not only, um, buildings that don't get repaired, or, and boilers don't, that don't get repaired, and roofs, roofs that start leaking. There's no extras for anything. But what the biggest impact for my students was the, uh, my, my, my children, was the, the increase in class size. It was always a scramble. Katie Leiken, can remember, first day of school, it was always, "Do we have enough, uh, desks in the classroom to accommodate all of the kids?" The other thing was all of the supports stopped. So whether it was enrichment, or unless you've met a very narrow criteria, the support for the students disappeared. So what happened is you would see, um, a lot of parents then were, um, getting tutoring for their kids outside the district. And so you will hear, uh, there was a lot of conversations and CRC conversations with the number of parents that were getting, uh, either remedial help for the kids, um, speech and language OT, uh, or enrichment programs. Were all done by the parents outside. That's where the CRC started to look at, at funding. The other thing was that we, because of the financial instability and the, the teachers not having contracts going forward, we saw massive teacher turnover. Some years, I know High Crest had a year where we had 30% new teachers in a school. That really changes the culture of the school, when 30% of the teachers are brand-new teachers. And then they would get a little bit of experience and then move on. It made for a very chaotic learning environment, and you didn't have that year-over-year growth in a school district because it's always, every year was a new game starting. It was not the best educational environment, and parents did a lot of work on the side to try and make it work. And there's been a lot of people that have worked hard in the community to say, "It's time to get your financial house in order. It's time to do things controlled and with, with thought and with care and without the element of chaos that used to exist." So I'm really urging the, you guys to pass the levy and be thoughtful and considerate, and don't ever risk putting our kids into the same sort of chaos that we saw in the '90s. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments, uh, or anybody else who would like to comment from the audience?
My name is Stephen Schwartz. Uh, I'm a nearly 18-year resident of Willmet, my wife and I. Uh, we moved here, as many people did, uh, mostly for the schools, although we did not have a child at that time. In fact, we paid into the system for 10 years before our daughter started attending Harper. Uh, she's currently at Willmet Junior High. She moves on to New Trier. Next year, we have no plans to leave the district. We've been extremely impressed with the quality of the, uh, teaching, the support staff, the administrators. I'm very appreciative of all of you here. You get what you pay for. You know, and I'll just, I'll repeat that, you get what you pay for. I, nobody likes to pay taxes, uh, but I can see very clearly, thanks to how the, uh, tax bill is presented, where the money is going. And I don't have any particular concern about the schools overspending, just from the presentation tonight. It sounds like you're doing a phenomenal job of keeping track of things and looking forward into the future, uh, and making sure that, uh, that, uh, there is a stable funding environment as much as possible. I just wanted to relate a, a quick story. I grew up in Los Angeles, and in 1978, the State of California amended its constitution and passed Proposition 13, which froze property taxes and then limited increases in any given year to 2%, uh, no more than 2%. Uh, two years later, I entered high school, and because of that bill, because of that amendment to the constitution, uh, the public school system got hit very hard. I ended up having to take, I won't say meaningless, but, uh, not very useful classes, music appreciation. I was a TA for an English teacher. Things I wanted to take, I couldn't take because the classes were not, they were full with students who needed them to graduate. There weren't enough classes, there weren't enough teachers. I ended up not being able to take biology until I was in 12th grade, which meant that I couldn't do chemistry, I couldn't do anything else that biology was a prerequisite for. I ended up not being a scientist, it wasn't really my goal, but I liked science, it would have been nice to do. Um, I realize that's not a perfect analog to what we're talking about here yet, I hope, but it did impact me and, and it made a difference, um, in, in my education. Uh, that's really all I wanted to say. Everybody else who spoke, and I would just be reiterating their comments, but thank you again. It sounds like you're doing a, a good job here. We would, you know, support the levy and, uh, keeping things on track, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Come forward. So just as a reminder, please state your name and the community you live in, which
I'm John Marshall. I live at A22 Prairie Avenue in Willmet. Uh, my three sons went through, uh, McKenzie and High Crest Middle School, Willmet Junior High School. Uh, one of them is now at New Trier, and two of them are in college. And I'd like to emphasize what a great job District 39 did in educating them, uh, preparing them for high school and for college. And now, even though my children are no longer in District 39, I do recognize the value of our schools for the other children in the community, and not just for the children, but for the community as a whole. Um, I think we all know, uh, the importance of schools, uh, in attracting people to Willmet and maintaining property values and, and making this a rich, uh, vibrant community. Uh, so I support the work that you have done. Uh, I support, uh, having the levy, um, at the rate of inflation, um, uh, keep up with your costs and expenses and, and keeping our schools, um, as excellent as they are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who would like to make a comment at this time? Oh, okay, come forward. Name and community again, please.
Is that on? Okay. I'm Kimberly Alcantara. I'm a resident of District 39. I have three sons, two of whom have gone through District 39, uh, and one who's, um, at High Crest right now. I too have been thinking of the refrain that if District 39 has the money to fund schools next year, why extend the upcoming levy by the rate of inflation? The reason, as referenced by Mr. Steen and others, is that we can project what will happen if the district does not extend the levy to align with CPI. If District 39 pays for its 2018-19 expenses with 2017-18 dollars, District 39's fund balances will be drawn down in a very predictable manner. Extending the levy by CPI reflects the reality of costs that increase for District 39. The district should extend the levy because it's necessary if we want District 39 to be able to pay for the education delivery and programming that this community wants and expects, not just next year, but the years after that as well. Failing to extend the levy would be, in my opinion, an undeniable financial misstep, particularly given pending legislation for a two-year property tax freeze, a likely shift from the state to District 39 of additional pension obligations, and projections of exponentially increasing healthcare costs. And this does not take into consideration programs that many District 39 residents vigorously want the district to add, and which would cost more than the district spends now. Just two examples being full-day kindergarten, moving band and orchestra into the school day. Finally, I'd like to encourage the board to continue maintaining and upgrading our facilities to keep pace with current educational models. By continually keeping our buildings up to date and not letting them become functionally antiquated, we avoid a situation, as with New Trier, when a major referendum was needed, simply to keep the buildings- simply to keep the building working for students and teachers. Finally, I'd ask District 39 to seriously consider increasing its target fund balance above thirty percent. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that having a thirty percent operating fund balance means the district would basically have three months' working capital. Especially given the uncertainties, uncertainties surrounding legislation that may affect District 39's financial situation detrimentally, I believe a thirty percent fund balance target may be imprudent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? Okay, I don't see any more, so thank you very much once again for the comments, and just like in the first section, for keeping our comments concise and, and civil. That takes us to the action items for tonight. May I have a motion for the action items? Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask, are there any items that board members would like removed from the action, from the consent agenda? Nothing? Okay, then we can go ahead with the motion.
My favorite part. I move to approve the personnel report dated November 13, 2017. I move to accept the fiscal year 2017 annual financial audit and comprehensive annual financial report for Willmet Public Schools, as presented by Klein Hall CPAs of Aurora, I move to approve fiscal year 2019 solicitation of bids for construction projects as attached to this board report, with expenditures estimated at $5,241,212 for non-life safety I'm, I move to approve as first reading of revised Board of Education Policies two-colon-two-thirty, public participation at Board of Education meetings, and petitions to the board. Six-colon-seventy religious holidays, six-colon-eighty controversial issues, six-colon-one-hundred resources for teachers, teachers, animals?
Yep.
Okay. Teachers, animals. Okay. All right. Yeah, I, I know, but it's teachers, colon, animals, okay. Six-colon-one-ten truance alternative and operational educational programs, six-colon-one-twenty special education, and six-colon-one-forty education of homeless children. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between October 24, 2017, and November 13, 2017, in the following amounts. Educational fund, $243,347.52. O&amp;M fund, $97,975.28. Debt fund, $1,087,307.50. Transportation fund, $191,795.95. Capital projects, $16,561, for a total all funds of $1,636,987.25. I move to approve the manual checks issued between October 24, 2017, and November 13, 2017, in the following amounts. Educational fund, $350,179. O&amp;M fund, $3,588.63. Transportation fund, $50.94, for total all funds of $353,818.57.
Thank you, the motion has been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you very much. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John says ready?
Yes.
Tracy Turner?
Yes.
Frank Cendicchio?
Yes.
Alex Japp?
Yes.
Ms. Schneiderface?
Yes.
Yes. The ayes have it, and the motion carries, and that brings us to the conference items. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, should I give the background? Based, new business, I would like to introduce, or suggest that we come up with a solid policy or practice for, around when public, when people write the board, their emails make the public packet. Here's why I'm suggesting that, is one, while it's not a written policy at this point, I know there's been a practice that you've inherited year-over-year from other, while it's not a written policy, I had to write this out. It's been communicated that, to ensure an email written by a constituent to the BOE and/or Ray gets published in the packet, the board and/or Ray needs to receive that email at least one week prior to publishing the board packet, specifically the Friday before the BOE meeting. Yet, no, I'm not done. I mean, I'm going to say about the easy answers versus the long ones. It's also been stated that some communications need more time to respond. Therefore, a week, while other, while others receive, a simple yes or no. So the, so the more complicated, or the more questions that an email a constituent sends, you, we'd like to say that at least a week ahead of time. If we have consistent communications, kind of like we've had in the last month, or whatever, and you get used to the answer, then, you know, you can respond really quickly. It doesn't take you that week to think about it again. Because complicated or non-complicated emails can be subjective, actually. I'd like to do a hard stop, just based on some community perception of what they've been told when something gets in the packet versus what actually happens, just to be, I think it just makes sense for us, whether we decide it has to be a full week ahead of time, whatever. And I absolutely understand that you like to respond, you want a response to those emails before they go in, so that, so, anyway, we don't have to decide all this tonight. Also, in addition, based on this week's public packet, there's a lot of constituents simply writing board members and not including Ray on the email. Therefore, so we don't violate the Open Meetings Act, because, just so everyone knows, if there's a majority of board members included on any communication, it's required by law to become public. We need to make sure, or come up with a policy, that, I mean, obviously, I, I would think, not obviously, that you should be the response on that, because you're the board president, but Ray should definitely be copied on that, so we don't miss the opportunity for it to make the packet. Even more importantly, that we don't miss the opportunity for a constituent, a constituent to receive a response. That's key. And finally, should board members want to individually respond to constituents like this board member likes to, continue the practice of, that we just, that I would copy the board president, so you're in the loop, so you understand, so you know what I've said, or that they've been responded to, and Dr. Lechner, also noting that, that communication would never end up in the board packet, because it wouldn't be a majority. You see a difference this time, because some of those communications did end up in the packet, and therefore, to be consistent, and not make it appear as though a certain board member only responds to certain emails, and not consistently across, confirming that any response made by a board member, or at least this one, will go in the packet through the December packet. So anyway, those are my reasons, et cetera, and that, I don't know when we speak about that, or when you want to vote on that. And I don't know if it should become part of that policy that we're talking about in December.
Great, well, I think, I think we can discuss this in our next committee of the whole, or strategy committee meeting, I think that's a good topic.
Thank you.
I will note that, although it took me a little longer than I wish, I hope that I've responded to everybody who wrote us before 4:00 p.m. today. I did see some after 4:00 p.m., and I didn't get to them, so.
But I wouldn't, we, no other board member would know that, nor should they, because you're responding to them, or we should be talking about that in the committee then.
We can talk about it in the committee.
Exactly.
But Ray is copied on those, but, but not anybody else.
Perfect.
As a response. Okay. Yeah.
I'd like to add something to new business. Ray, I just wanted to know if, maybe for next month, you could present on whether or not it's worth advocating to not administer the park test in the spring, given it doesn't really impact instruction in the classroom. You don't have to answer.
No, I already know the answer.
You do.
Why? Because it's mandated?
Yes.
And, and there's, there's not, it's not even worth pursuing a waiver?
I can check into that.
Thank you.
Are there any other new business items? Okay, do we have any good in welfare? All right. Thank you very much. May I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel.
May I have a second?
Second.
Then, will the clerk please call the roll?
John says ready?
Yes.
Tracy Turner?
Yes.
Frank Cendicchio?
Yes.
Alex Japp? Yes. Yep.
Yes, and with that, the motion carried, and we are now adjourned to executive session. The time is ten on the dot. Thank you all very much for coming tonight.